Sorry, everyone. We're a little bit late. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for April 9th, 2025. The meeting has been properly posted, and we have a vote up.
I think you can get it somewhere. Dr. Cott is excused from this evening. Mrs. Wukowski here. Mrs. Yang here. Mr. Sprague?
Here.
Dr. Beer?
Here.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Here.
Thank you. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance Group.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Wukowski, seconded by Mrs. Sapursky. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Friends of Franklin, recognition. Mr. Bondar, please.
I just wanted to recognize, I'll just talk about it. I just wanted to recognize Hillary Ford. Basically, when I started at Franklin, for those of you that don't know, I'm Alex Bondar. I'm a host teacher at Franklin High School. When I started at Franklin 12 years ago, it was a lot of me putting my boots in the door at local businesses, and Hillary Ford was very accommodating right away. What can we do to help you? And it was usually me going, like, how can I help you? So at this point, I just wanted to recognize all the things that they've done over the past 12 years. I've got a full list of things here. So some of the things currently and formerly employing many students. These may be in positions by detail and loud attendance, art department, any of the loop technicians or an automotive technician itself. They've also sponsored quite a few students through the M A T C asset and Ford Asset Program, which is giving these students work credentials as they look into that M A T C, gives them what they put in the door, kind of take it off running early when they start their career. They also supply a great tuition reimbursement to the students, which is a huge benefit. They've supplied us vehicles, equipment, either through donation or even just lending us specialty tools. So some of the tools that's difficult for me with a high school budget to be able to get, they won't let me use those tools on a short, on a short term when I needed them, which is a huge help for us. Other things as well, they help out with their tire disposal. So when students do tires, there is a disposal fee, usually about five dollars for tire that we need to take care of. We don't do enough modeling to actually get a pickup setup. But Hillary Ford has been great where they just said, we'll take all of your tires, building the grounds, takes them over to Hillary Ford, and then take care of the disposal people, which is great. They also send over people to come talk with students about just any career within the automotive industry. It doesn't just need to be a mechanic or a technician, anything within that. Because, I mean, they've got anything under the sun, whether it's an accountant, salesman, whatever it may be. So they came and talked to my students about different career opportunities within the automotive industry. When I've had difficulties diagnosing issues with students on some vehicles, they've been a helping hand for us. Whether it's giving them a phone call, hey, here's the issue you have, they've helped us out with that with talking with technicians. They've even sent technicians through to the school to show the students, here's how I would go about diagnosing this problem, which is great with them seeing an actual technician come in, here's what we're doing. And what was kind of cool was like, we've done all these checks already, and those are the same checks that they went through. So it's showing like, hey, this stuff we're doing in class is pertinent to what you're doing out in your career as well. So these are all just things that I wanted to recognize with Hillary Ford over the past 12 years. They have been an invaluable asset for us. They're invaluable to the community, and they're obviously the biggest help to my community.
Cool.
Thank you very much.
We're really happy to be partnering with Franklin, and it's fun to pray and the students that we've got to meet through the program have been wonderful too. Thank you, Alex, for connecting us with all these things.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You need to have a picture. Nobody leaves it alone.
Thank you. Thank you much. Awesome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bondar.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those are the types of programs, these are the types of programs that are so invaluable to our students. So we really appreciate the community helping out. So thank you very much. All right, community comment. We have three teachers who wish to comment. And so I will call you up in no particular order. Three minutes, please.
Oh, you got it. Okay.
Jonathan Schaefer.
My name is Jonathan Schaefer, and I'm a social studies teacher at the high school. First, I want to congratulate Mr. Sprague, Ms. Larson, on their reelection to be school board. I understand that insurance is a huge cost to the district, and so each year requires a new search for ways to continue to provide insurance and benefits that many of us utilize at a price the school district is able to make work. As you work on making these very important decisions, I wanted to share some thoughts on how those decisions could impact teachers at an individual level. Last week, the F H S representatives on the Better Place to Work Task Force shared with us some of the rough numbers that are being considered for possible salary increases and insurance changes for next year. I fully realize that none of these numbers are finalized yet, however, the proposals worry me. Based on the numbers provided by the Better Place to Work Task Force, I'm anticipating my salary to increase by roughly $1,000 for next year. Many of the new insurance options would see our premiums go up hundreds, if not thousands, of dollars. If that ends up happening, even with that salary increase, I could see up to $5,000 less in my bank account at the end of next year as a result of those newly increased premiums coming out of my paychecks. This means that after four years of working in the district, I could effectively be getting a large paid cut. Last year, last year when I attended the board meetings that discuss salaries and insurance, one of the points brought up is contributing to our high health insurance costs with a number of people using Plan One, the low deductible plan. I don't remember the exact numbers, but essentially having too many people on Plan One that were generally healthy and therefore did not need such extensive coverage was draining money from the district. I fully admit that I was one of those healthy people who selected Plan One. But I would like to share a personal story to illustrate that healthy people may have some very valid reasons for making that selection. For the last two school years, my wife and I have been on Health Plan One with the hopes that it would better help cover our costs when we have a baby. Unfortunately, we have not been able to get pregnant yet, but as we continue on our family's journey, the prospect of our insurance premiums going up so much adds more stress to an already uncertain time. Others have their own unique stories that inform their healthcare decisions, and ultimately, we choose the peace of mind that comes with, comes from the more robust insurance coverage option. I'm proud to be a teacher at Franklin High School and hope to be working in the district for many more years. But seeing those potential, these potential changes being discussed that could lead to me losing out on thousands of dollars in wages is scary. I'm also worried that there are exceptional F P S employees who will leave the district if those changes are implemented. I'm hoping there are other options we can look into. One idea is to consider pooling with other districts to help spread and reduce insurance costs while also keeping premiums lower. That way, we could reduce the district's costs, maintain a similar version of the coverage we have now, and still retain all those amazing staff that F P S is now for. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All the dryer, please.
Good evening, and now a shocker that I'm here. I am here to ask one simple question. Why? Why, when it is incredibly difficult to find quality educators, would you consider increasing the cost of premiums by as much as 100% and/or raise our deductible by thousands and then offer many of us a salary increase of 1.74%? Yes, Mr. Cromwey will tell you that it is a 3.5, 3.45% increase, but that again is an aggregate amount. If you did not receive your master's degree or move up to the next five-year level, you receive a little more than 1.7%. I was also wondering if a 35-plus-year contract, our column, will be added to the contract as there are a few of us that have put in that many years of service to Franklin Public Schools. Last year, when this ridiculously unfair salary schedule was imposed, we were promised that it would be revisited this school year. Has this been done? Why am I or any other elective or special ed teacher making $2,200 less than a core teacher or specialist? You compare median salaries from neighboring districts, but you don't even account for the fact median salaries for these two areas are lower because these teachers either lead the profession entirely or they district have to receive higher salaries, thus the lower median. Educators should not be broken into categories. Some of us are not less valuable than others. We are teachers. We come to work every day to help the students of Franklin Public Schools. Perhaps Franklin needs a DOFE, Department of Franklin Efficiency. Perhaps we should take a look at the high number of people working in our schools that have very little daily interaction with students. Why do we need so many coaches, systems specialists, and administrators when times are tough? When I began my teaching career 34 years ago, there were three people working in the district office, which was located in the large office in the front part of Countrydale Elementary School. Now we have an entire building full of administrative staff that continues to increase in number every year. We are perfectly willing as educators to talk about reasonable increases to premiums and/or deductibles. But so far, we have been left out of the conversation except for the Better Place to Work Committee. And there are three high school representatives on that committee. In fact, the roadshow that we have had last year to educate the staff about the nine options you will be shown tonight has not even been scheduled. So much for a better place to work. Please consider how these changes could impact teacher retention and negatively impact the learning of our amazing kids. Thank you.
Mary Carol Aitch, please.
Hi, Mr. Lanning.
Thank you. All right, those are all the people that signed up. Does anybody else wish to speak? All right, thank you. All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'd like to remove the CISA contract from that.
I'd like to make an emotion.
We're not going to be voting on one.
Whether I can pull her out.
Okay, sorry.
All right, Linda would like to, do we need to have a second to pull something from the consent agenda? All right.
So I move to approve the consent agenda saved for the CISA contract.
All right, motion's made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Larson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. And the CISA contract. Linda, do you have something to say?
Yes, I do. I don't believe it's appropriate that we would have a contract as part of the consent agenda, and that's why I pulled it. If we need to bring up a contract, we should, we should be just pulling, rolling everything else we should. Look at it, make a decision, devote it separately. So that said, I make a motion to approve the CISA contract as it was presented.
Second.
Our motion was made by Mrs. Wukowski, seconded by Dr. Beer. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. School board calendar, key communicators meeting coming up Tuesday, April 15th at Forest Park Middle School at 5:00 P. M. Regular Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, April 23rd at the E C C at 6:00. And also, May 7th on Wednesday at the E C C at 6:00. And the Franklin Public Schools Business Partner Breakfast will be Tuesday, April 29th, 2025, at Ascension Southeast Wisconsin Hospital, Franklin Campus, at 7:30 A. M. District Administrator update. See the flowers on Dr. Bennon's desk. She has recently finished, or is doing some edits, but she has been conferred her doctorate. Congratulations, Dr. Bennon. It's a great, great honor. We're proud to have you here.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So a couple of fun things tonight to update us on before we have an agenda with a lot of busy items to talk about, heavy items to talk about. An exciting category, the 2025 Herb Cole Education Foundation Teacher Fellows were announced just this week. There's 100 Teacher Fellows in the state, and we have been fortunate to have three from Franklin High School. Pat Dain is one of them, and he's with us here tonight. So thank you for being with us, Pat. Grace Barr, our transition 18 to 21 year program leader, was another of our award winners, and also Andy Levine. And I never know if I say his last name right, so I apologize if I didn't, but he's one of ours.
Love it, love it.
Thank you. I went back and forth, and I appreciate that. I'm often benign, so I understand that it's important to try to get names right. So he's a social studies teacher at the high school, so a great honor and recognition for our amazing staff at our high schools, especially this year. So they are recipients of a $6,000 scholarship, and this scholarship program's been in the state for many years. So very exciting for us. Last week, we had a math night at Forest Park Middle Schools. We want to thank our partners, Mathnasium. We had a 30% increase in the attendance of students with their parents. There were 10 stations to work through, a lot of hands-on math. It was really exciting to see them engaged, and then they get turned in a card at the end to win a prize for coming out, so it was great attendance. President Sprague, Andy Comby, and I were able to represent the school district and the school board at the Joint Committee on Finance at State Fair Park last Friday. They are holding four full-day sessions across the state as they are working to identify what the next biennial budget will be. So we spoke on behalf of three areas that we continue to send letters and talk with our legislators about, and those areas are supporting funding for schools so we can better support and retain financially our teachers, which is what we also heard here tonight. Looking at increased funding reimbursement for special education, we are asking for 60%, that's below 35% right now. And also additional financial support for our career and technical education fields. So there's two more sessions, and then we hope that a biennial budget comes out in the next couple of months. But we hear it may be delayed, so we will find out. Our recent newsletters have shared how our F H S Child Development Two course is holding Saber Preschool for children aged three to five for three weeks at the beginning of April, so registration's still open or through the 17th for families that are interested. Also, as we move into April, a couple of exciting events coming up for the Franklin Education Foundation. This Saturday at Forest Park is the consignment sale, one of their bigger fundraisers. The Fall Pickleball Tournament was a hit, so they're running another pickleball tournament that is Saturday, April 26th. In addition, they are selling the yard signs for our graduating seniors and soon-to-be-promoted eighth graders. Those orders are needed by April 11th, so coming up relatively quick. Forte Theater, also our local partner theater company, has their second weekend of their main stage production, The Secret Garden, at the Saber Center for Performing Arts. Tickets are still available. It's appropriate for all ages. We can bring anybody out. And then just a reminder to our families, not that our students usually need a reminder, but we do not have school on Friday, April 18, and Monday, April 21st. And Monday, April 21st is our final professional development day for staff. That's all. Any questions? Please let me know.
Thank you. Reports, presentations, and other board business. Franklin Forward update. Dr. Bennon and Mike Hacker, please.
All right, so we, Mike and I, Mike Hacker and I are excited to be here tonight to talk about Franklin Forward update. So as we talked about in January, we will quarterly bring a bigger report to the board of just the progress on the work that's taking place with the referendum. Our team's obviously meeting on a weekly basis with our consultants, continuing through the process. So when we were here in January, we talked a bit about just getting the committee together, the teams together, getting our meetings on the schedule, kind of organizing the work, while the continuation of that discussion this evening. So the overview of what we're going to talk about, the biggest things going on the last couple of months have been around feedback, right? It takes time in a community this size to gain feedback from a variety of stakeholders, so we'll have some outcomes of that feedback. Beginning to look at budget, obviously, we're not breaking ground yet. We're not at big package, but we'll talk a little bit about what that looks like at this point in time. Capital improvement, what are the referendum projects most immediate coming up? And then also how we've continued to work to build partnership with the city of Franklin. We'll always ground in the coherence plan, right? Everything that we're doing is about the three-year coherence plan that we're in our first year. This is the third three-year plan. It's exciting to repeat that as a district that's strategically planning and continuously improving. I think when we look at specifically the coherence plan tonight, we're really looking at the engagement category. A lot of the work for the last couple of months has been to try to continually engage different stakeholders, get creative about how we're bringing in different perspectives, and getting that feedback to P R A and to C D Smith as they're working through the design. I think also what you'll hear more about is in the wellbeing category. Some of that feedback will come in around safety, college life, and career readiness. And then obviously fiscal stewardship is always going to be a part of the backbone of the work going on. When we were together in January, we talked about and shared the design and budget process, and this has been something that's helped me ground in how does this work go, because you have a past referendum, referendum, and a community, and staff, and students excited about the growth, and you want to go right away. But it's kind of like a hurry up and wait type piece. There's a lot of work that goes into it and a lot of time. So when we were together at that point, we talked about this orange space and this diagram being that schematic design. It's really when we're bringing in a lot of different feedback, we are talking about different ideas. Those drawings that we saw when we were going to referendum and doing listening sessions were the boxes. Now we're starting to look at like, do those boxes fit within the budget that we have? Does that box or those boxes start to fit the needs that we have, and how are we getting to more detail within that design? The next phase is the design phase, which we're really close to, right? I would have hoped maybe we would have had some of that tonight already, but we don't have the design phase, right? And an example, kind of a design phase, would be a little bit of what you're seeing in the boards around the room from the CIRP building. We had that groundbreaking today. It's more the specific detail of what's inside and how is it meeting those needs? We're getting closer to that. We're going to definitely have that by our next quarterly check-in, July 9th, if not before. But we're not quite there yet. I think the exciting part of that is that as we've talked and thought about ideas and brought in different perspectives, P R A, our architects, have been able to put more detail and specificity, potentially what's in those boxes, right? Which gives C D Smith then more to go with when they're going out to vendors or they're going out to get ideas of what cost would be. Very different than bid. We're not bidding out yet, but we're trying to get as close in our cost estimates at this point going into design phase so that we know through this three- to four-year build that we're appropriately aligning those funds. So that's kind of the point where we're at right now, is that arrows move slightly in the orange box, closer to design. But right now, it's in C D Smith's hands, taking some of what we've looked at in the design and starting to get costing out to say, does this still fit within those parameters we have of the 140, 120 million-ish for the high school or not yet? So then we get into the feedback. This has been a lot of work from Mark Grunske and Chad Kafka been pulling together the stakeholder feedback from the Qualtrics survey that was sent out through our newsletters, our different publications, and some of the feedback that we've gained by meeting with others. So we've had over 485 responses. The graph on the screen looks slightly different than the one in the print. It's the same box as the box on the right in print in front of you. It just moved to the left to make it on one screen. But 485 responses from a variety of stakeholders, community members, alumni, students from Forest Park and from the high school. Since our Forest Park students will be some of the first to take in the new spaces at the high school, and then also parents. The questions are on this slide, but we'll talk a little more about those as we get into the feedback. So when we're using Qualtrics, and people can put in comments, you get a lot of words, right? It's a very big qualitative study. As someone who's just been sitting in qualitative study, right, you're starting to look for themes. So Mark Grunske is our data wizard behind the scene who's looking and reading through those and starting to pull those codes or those themes together. And when we look at on the next slides, the feedback, you're going to see bigger circles. You can actually go back one gesture.
Sure.
Just clicking, thank you. Bigger circles means that theme came up more often. If they get a little smaller, it came up less often. But usually on the slides, you're seeing anywhere from the top five to 10 themes that came through. The coloring is really important to note, too. It's A I-generated, right? So it's not perfect. When it says very negative, I really want to define what very negative it is. It doesn't mean there were angry people giving angry comments. What it means when there's red, that reddish color or that kind of the color close to red, pinkish, is that the comments were around that theme, but maybe in a, we need more space like this, or more of this, or we have some of it, or it doesn't exist yet, but it's something we're looking for. So red means we need to add it, or we need to build upon. Green means it's there, and it's something that we're really proud of already or really visible already in the spaces that we have. So that's just kind of coding us for the next slides. So our first group we are going to look at is our community alum and non-alum. So basically, community members, they don't fall into the family category. And the question we were asking them is, what ways do you find the most pride in Franklin Public Schools? Right? They're going to have a little different perspective because they are maybe choosing when they're in our schools. Maybe it's the rec department, maybe it's going to the Performing Arts Center, maybe it's a grandchild they're going to see, but they're not directly tied to families or students that are here right now. What I, what I noted these, and everybody's going to look at it and see it a little different, but we're building a building, right? But it's what goes on in that building that's really important. And I think that's the voice that we're starting to hear through the stakeholder feedback. It's not, I want this many stations, or I need this equipment in the auto's lab. It's we need these spaces because we have high standards, because we want to progress in the work we're doing. Athletics have been important, right? It's one of those bigger circles. We need this space to accommodate that. That we've had a strong student focus, right? There's a lot of green there. We need to continue building with that in mind. I think that's encouraging to see from our community. The next slide goes into our parent feedback themes. So there's two questions that we asked our parents. So the first was in the top box, what does being college or career ready mean? I mean, that being one of our specific strategic priority areas in our coherence plan. It's why we wanted that to come through in the feedback also. The second question we asked is basically envisioning what that perfect day looks like for a student at Franklin High School. What does it feel like? What are those interactions? And what's going on in that space? So again, those top themes are shown. The bigger circles are the more repeated themes that are coming through. And I think, again, it's that what's happening in this space is really the important piece. So some of the things that have happened already when we are in the core planning team room is we're often talking about the learning that's taking place, the challenges that are going on. But then when we flip to the next slide and you now combine this with the student perspective, you're starting to see like, where are those spaces that students are identifying this is happening? So the bottom box is Forest Park, right? They're coming from across the way. High school is what they're experiencing currently at the high school. We see some overlap in what spaces and what that field looks like. And I think what stands out and comes out in our core planning team meetings are, the commons is a really big circle, right? And if you've been in the high school, that space is busy with students before the day starts, at the end of the day, throughout the day. Libraries, same thing, but it's giving that space where they're coming together, they're working together, collaborating. We're thinking about that when we're in the schematic phase right now of design, of how can we continue to design spaces like that in the addition to the high school or the renovation of the high school where there's other spaces that students can come together that staff can think about where are our students going out to work and coming back in? And so bringing together some of that feedback. And the middle school students, they have that breakout room experience, right? Where we don't really have, we have some breakout rooms at the high school, right? That math space is probably the best example. So then what that brings to our core team planning meetings is incorporating that with staff feedback and thinking about where else do we want some of those breakout spaces, right? We've heard some from, I know just in conversations I've had, I think, beginning of the year with rural language in particular, like, how do we have spaces too, where we can go out and in all this classroom where kids are going out the hall and doing activities? It's like, where can we build spaces that students can go and be independent or be in a small group and kind of start that gradual release in their learning? The next slide about is a student feedback slide in regards to pride. So what is the best thing about being a saver? I think some of the excitement in here is the I think some of the excitement in here is the people, right? So continuing to have the right people in the space. Like, we may think as we design and get to design phase of referendum work, this doesn't really help with that design, but it does, right? We want to make sure there's opportunity where the flow of students and staff through the building means that we're having those interactions and those opportunities. We want to make sure that we're incorporating in the rooms that are being affected by the renovation or the new building that we're really especially getting that staff feedback there for what helps for your teaching taking place in those spaces. And then we have a board member insight. So a number of you did videos and I figured you probably didn't want your videos showing tonight. So instead, Chan and I worked to pull together some of those bigger themes that were coming just from the board table, who's been a part of a lot of the learning through the years, through different referendums and the continuing forward work. And I think the words that really stood out here as I thought about this was, and looked through it is, being top-notch, meeting the needs of what our, our staff, our students, our families, our community are looking for. Making community, creating space for community really seemed to come through. And then that safety accessibility piece on top of the learning pathways and increasing those spaces. So where does that all go from here? We have a couple of videos from students that I think just give some good voice to it also that we'll play in a minute and see how the volume comes through. I know we're having some tech coaches this evening that we have repair orders out for. But where this goes from here is, like I said, the core team has looked at this a number of times already to incorporate into our conversations through schematic design. And then also handing that directly over to our architects, to our construction company, to PRA and CDSmith, to make sure that they're continuing to think about and be able to explain and articulate where this is coming through in design. Because they have the expertise, they've been in a lot of schools, they have the education in that design phase, know what that can look like. So if we can try to play a couple of student videos.
I'm hearing them.
We'll see how it works.
When I'm at Forest.
Sorry.
When I'm at Forest Park Middle School, the most productive area for me to learn is in the back of the hallway in the breakout rooms because they're really quiet and they have whiteboards on the wall. And I'm the most productive when I have a whiteboard to write on.
When I'm at HHS, the most productive area for me to learn is in the north and upper currents. I really like these two spaces because of the comfortable seating as well as the privacy that students are able to get from people traveling in the hallways. I understand that not all classrooms are able to work in these two areas, but it is an opportunity and a treat to be able to work in either area. I enjoy these two areas because I'm able to walk in and get my work done as well as be able to sit more comfortably rather than on a new desk chair. My favorite part about being a Sabre is being able to get to know staff members and teachers as well as my classmates and who eventually will become my friends. I enjoy going to Franklin because of all the opportunities we are offered, whether it's through taking rigorous and challenging classes or joining clubs and activities that will help me reach our resume for college and get us more involved within the community. Being a part of National Honor Society or even organizing big community events such as Culture Fest as a part of being in multicultural club are super important, not only as a student, but eventually as a person in the real world.
So they had the option of doing a video or just voice, so obviously they had couples that were just voice. Some next steps or other steps that have happened with stakeholders specific to staff in the building that have their classrooms that are going to be either renovated or completely rebuilt. I mean, December was a first round of initial feedback where you're sat with PRA. They'd really, again, an architect firm to really talk about what does that space look like? What do they dream it to look like? Had some site visits at that time also to see what it looks like in other districts. Dr. Mo has started working with a group of high school administrators and other staff to talk about like, what is model high school? So if you have this opportunity to make some renovations to a school, how are we really thinking about? How do we brand that? What is that student experience when they walk through the door the first time to when they walk out the door the last time? And in March, we started to engage with, work around looking at the equipment that we have in our CTE spaces and asking for our educators' help on that. Obviously, they're using that equipment, so what do we currently have, what do we aspire to have? And we hope to partner that with different companies and businesses in our area to understand what equipment do we need as we continue to grow. And then April's a second round of feedback that starts, I think it started last week already, if I remember correctly, through the month, mostly on the 21st, to talk with different groups of educators in our spaces that are being renovated to talk about where are we currently at from the last round of feedback and get some initial looks at that nearing the end of schematic phase. Not at design yet, not at final, but thoughts and feedback at this round. And then May slash June is when we're hoping to have that design phase work to share out. The goal's really to not move it too fast, that we're not taking the time it needs to be looked at, but also would really like to have all that in front of the high school staff to know what that's going to look like, at least at this point, before they leave for the summer and understand what it, what's going to look different when we come back in August. So budget update, I've done a lot of talking. I'm going to let our owners, Red Mike Hacker, talk a little bit about where are we currently at with the budgeting? What do those big packages look like? Is that's obviously when the biggest expenses and things start to come through with the project?
Yeah, so as was noted, Mike Hacker with Kins Consulting, good to see everyone. As was noted earlier, we're coming to the end of schematic design on our timeline and transitioning into design development. At those gates, we are formally going through a process to re-cost estimate the project in its current state. And as you might imagine, as design evolves, that budget just evolves into greater and greater detail. Okay, and so we're in the process of those SD drawings, kind of having been handed off to CDSmith. They've been meeting with subcontractors, with a lot of their vendors. Not getting bids yet, but starting to get some real-time cost estimates. And as we all track headlines, right? There's a lot of volatility out there right now around current costs for materials and kind of lead times to get products. And so they're doing everything they can to have their finger on the pulse of that so that as we're making decisions, we're as accurately representing what they believe the budget is at any point along the way. And so that's an ongoing process. In that, as, as noted, you know, when we think about budgeting, it's really, how do we, how's the district want to allocate these resources? Right? So it's really an exercise of prioritization. So feedback like we're getting, although some of that seems soft or big picture and from the parents and students and board members, it, it's critical to be sure it's reinforcing the decisions that are made, right? As, as we're looking to allocate those resources and apply them to areas of the building, every square foot is a dollar amount, right? So as we allocate square footage for common spaces or break rooms, that means it may not be able to be allocated somewhere else. And so feedback like that, not the only reference point, but a really important added layer to be sure the team that's been charged with giving direction and making those decisions is getting as much feedback as possible. So I really valued that as another layer of information to support the team's dialogue and reinforce the work that, that is going on. And the hope is to keep building on that as we get further and further into, into the project. And then as the architects prepare to present to the board and to the community what the vision looks like and what these spaces are shaped like, it will be through the, the lens of this voice, right? What they heard here, how that aligns with the original project goals, how that reinforces the coherence plan and all, all those pieces. So really important as we layer that into the, to the budget process. So we have structured budget dates on our master schedule. And you see that in the first bullet point here, April, June, August, September, January. A project of this complexity has a lot going on simultaneously, right? So we are, are going to have, right now, scheduled three bid packages for a project of this size, which just means we're designing, for a project that has this duration, it is advantageous to bid portions of it as soon as possible while we're continuing to design other pieces down the line. So for instance, the first bid package will focus on site work and maybe some footings and foundations for the building, right? Things that we're going to take multiple months to start demo and start moving earth and, and, you know, setting foundations. In those multiple months, the team can continue to design other portions of the building, right? So these, these layers start to overlap one another. And as we're doing that, the CDSmith team is charged as construction manager to continue to provide budget updates. So every decision that is made, as the team has options to pick path A or path B, they're cost evaluating those two paths, so we're layering that in to this. And as you might imagine, we kind of think of it as upfront, the really big puzzle pieces, right? The big blocks of space, the adjacencies, what's near the front door versus what's further back, right? The, the big decisions. And then as those lock in, those decisions become smaller and smaller. Not in, not in priority, very important decisions, but they become more granular, right? All the way down to the doors and the locks and the windows and if there are blinds on the windows or not, like all the details. But if we don't have the rooms in the right spot, it's kind of irrelevant if we have blinds on the windows or not, right? Big picture. So really important to be prioritizing those decisions upfront. And so, so this process will continue to evolve. We have, within the overall budget, when we say budget, obviously there's a referendum budget, which includes both phases of work. So the core work at the high school, which is the big piece that probably comes to mind first and foremost. The next slide here in a second, we're going to talk a little bit about the capital improvement projects, which are critical district-wide investments. There are soft costs, so we think of construction costs, which are bricks and mortar. That's going to be what we see in when the project's done. But there are a lot of costs that go into getting those, that bricks and mortar in place, right? Architectural services, plan approval fees, we're going to have permit fees and inspection fee, all the things that it takes to, to get this done. That's a separate section in the budget model where we're, we're gathering those as that information is coming forth and we know enough to get insurance quotes and get furniture quotes. And so we keep layering that in as, as more detail is provided. So that's building itself as this information comes. Right now, we have three contingency buckets. That's generally a question we get is, is, you know, is there a contingency? How is a contingency managed? In a project like this, we think of contingency really as our, our tool to manage risk, financial risk to the project, right? So if surprises come up or there's a big cost increase or steel or something and we have to find a way to, to afford that as a part of the project. The district has an estimating contingency, a construction contingency and a soft cost contingency, all built into different portions of the budget model. Okay, so estimating is just, you know, today, we, we know a lot, right? But we don't know every detail, right? We don't know every door handle and whether it blinds or not. So we have to make a lot of assumptions still. It's all included in there with a lot of assumptions. As we have fewer and fewer assumptions, that contingency can get reallocated, right? There's less risk, if that makes sense, okay? The construction contingency is a pool of money that is maintained over the course of construction. So that's for things that come up during the construction process. We had bad soils or open a wall and there's a pipe we didn't know about, something like that. But every project has it. It's just smart to have those dollars set aside and managed and that is currently built within. And then lastly, a soft cost contingency, which just puts a, a dollar amount aside to help manage all the soft costs that are occurring in the project as well. Okay, and then. I have no problem.
Go ahead, let me hear the question.
I'm wondering, you talked about, you know, overall design and we saw those overall pictures and spaces. Has that changed at all as you're moving through? Is there anything, I mean, you've talked about all these decisions being made. Can you give an example of some of these decisions that have been made? And is, I mean, is that thing changing? Because we don't, is it the same picture or are you seeing things differently?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's a great question. It's, it's certainly evolving, yes. So examples there being, instead of just big blocks of space that say CTE or athletics, what you now would see in the detailed plans would be all of the specific rooms for CTE laid out, meaning woods, metals, autos, storage space to support those. And the dialogues that are occurring with staff now are looking critically at those spaces. Have we forgotten anything? Is it all there? Do we have the right adjacencies? Like, are the right rooms next to one another?
Do you discover anything was out of place or any new adjacencies or?
Every day, yeah. I mean, that, but that's design. That's not, that's not a negative, that's just, successful design is an evolution. Where you put all the information on paper, look at it, react, take that feedback, keep evolving it, keep reacting and, and keep moving forward. So hopefully they are, right? Hopefully the, the staff is identifying things that we didn't think about. We are working to create continued strategies for how we get other voices to look at the same plans, right? Experts maybe from outside of the school and from, from other industries to help us make sure we're, we continue to identify as much as possible. So the plans certainly are evolving further. The balance in this is always that until there's a firm budget update, which is in process, it's difficult to say, is everything accounted for within that accurately to represent what the project can afford, right? Because as always, you get into a project, we want to do as much as possible, get as much into this project and, and, you know, successfully complete this. But to be, do that appropriately, we have to be sure we can afford all those things. And that goes back to that prioritization. So if, in fact, something comes in, a portion of the building comes in over budget today, that's, that doesn't mean the project's over budget necessarily, it just means we have to continue to look at those priorities. Where do we have to refine some of those things? What changes have to be made? And that's just an evolution and that's what's in process right now.
Can you go and say what percent you're using for contingencies?
Sure, yeah. Right now, the project has... Give me two seconds. So the... Yeah, so right now, if we were to, as an example, look at the estimating and construction contingency bucket, that's sitting right around eight percent right now. And that fluctuates again. On most projects, when you get to construction, on a project of this size, you want to be holding somewhere between five and seven percent, okay? And that just depends on the project and the complexity. And then the estimating contingency, again, continues to evolve depending on the uncertainty in the estimating market. Okay, so right now, I think it's between eight and nine percent for those two as an example.
I think construction is another percentage and stuff just another.
Yep, Mike, we could break those out and, and support that as a follow-up as, as needed.
Thank you.
Yep. And then lastly, we continue to look for opportunities for additional revenue sources. As always, like we had said, I think at the first meeting, we have met with Focus on Energy to look at the CIP projects. Focus on Energy has two separate programs, one for those types of projects, the other's for new build projects. So we have a meeting set up next week with Focus on Energy to talk about the high school project. And that'll be more significant financially as an opportunity. So again, leveraging that and we'll continue to look for, for additional opportunities. Where we see more, more quantity of grant opportunities tend to come for, in, in terms of equipment and how we outfit space than it is to build a physical building, right? So I think there, as we get further down the line, looking at CTE equipment or athletics equipment, I think we're going to continue to find more of those that will, will bring forth as potential opportunities. The next item is a bit of a forecast ahead of, I think, next month when Andy Daniels will be in front of the board presenting his department update and all the work that there currently is underway, as well as what they're planning in the year and in years ahead. The summer ahead though, there is a significant effort forthcoming related to the referendum scope. So as we noted, the project has the core high school work and then the CIP work district-wide. Right now, this summer, almost $12 million worth of investment is planned for projects across the district out of the referendum. Okay, and I know that's always tough when, when there's a large referendum and there's a lot of excitement around it, yet it takes a long time for it to materialize and start to see, you know, look like something. My high school still has a runway for that to, to come. Immediately this summer, we're going to start to see a lot of improvement at all the elementary schools district-wide. And those are going to be things like exterior doors, building envelope, which just means like tuck pointing and repairing cracks, maybe replacing some windows. Certainly roof repairs will be key. There's going to be site improvements, both things like, not fun things like dumpsters, right? Enclosures around dumpsters, but fun things like playgrounds and recess areas. ADA upgrades at a number of schools, interior finish updates, as well as updates to mechanical, electrical and plumbing systems across those buildings. So do note, Andy Daniels plans to present a more robust detail of that at which schools and what the game plan is for that. I wanted to tie that into this update, that a significant piece of the referendum is coming and by the start of the next school year will be already in place for, for the district. This is a, just a quick glance at the pre-construction schedule. Mainly, I think the intent here is to share that, one, there is one, and it's fairly detailed. There's a lot of things that go on between now and starting construction. So this is, as we look at the high school in particular, a lot of approvals, a lot of reviews, a lot of collaboration that goes on to make a project like this come together with the level of complexity that it has. And so what this looks to do is just take all those entities and put them on the same timeline, just so we can be sure we're, we're tracking. This ties also to... This ties also to district calendar. So we look at start of school, start of summer, when we have windows of time that are, in terms of like staff engagement and, and access to the buildings, things like that. But I think one of the, the key pieces is where we transition next, which is, is the engagement with the city. So a project of this size has a lot of approvals relative to plan commission and, and, you know, common council review. We're going to have permitting, that's going to happen as a department project. So what we wanted to queue up was just the fact that the, the district has now engaged now regularly with the city and our officials at, at the city level, department level, to start to begin that collaboration. So Annalee, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, yeah, it's a great segue. So the, the pre-construction schedule you're seeing, like we talked about last meeting, my district administrator update, we had at that point our first meeting with the city. And it was kind of, what are you talking about with the city to start out? Well, really it's these two slides. It's what Mr. Hacker just went through as far as that timeline and construction, pre-construction piece, to be really forthcoming in the city also with us to understand what, what are the timelines we're hoping to hit? Because that, our goal with that is to advance the conversation with the city to understand, okay, now let's layer in one of your planning meetings, planning commission, one of your city council meetings. What do you need for those meetings? So that we know that target and we can do our best to, to get a bullseye on that target, right? To bring everything we need to those meetings, so that we are keeping on schedule with the work that we're making the best use of our taxpayer dollars in this referendum. So this is the construction, pre-construction, I'm sorry, schedule that we shared with the city. The next slide is really just the main people that are at those city meetings. So these are happening monthly at the beginning of month, we meet tomorrow for the second time with this group, just to continue to talk about, like I said, those schedules. What are their city schedules coming up? And then sharing what are, what are the forms they need for just all of our planning that we're doing, what they need bringing forward. So just starting those conversations. The next slide talks about our topics of collaboration. So the items that will be on those agendas, starting tomorrow and moving forward, are the access drive at Highview Road. So that's a road that just kind of puts up to the property, school property on the east side at this point. So what is that going to look like to connect that? Having all of those conversations. There's conservation easements on the land. So talking about if we're disrupting something, what does that look like from the city's perspective on what we need to do? Local approvals, right? We just talked about what are, what are the approvals they need? They're kind of in the process, the city, of changing that system too. And so we're kind of in the middle of their process of changing it. So that's going to take a lot of conversations to understand what's in the new system, what's in the old system. It involves fire department will eventually be pulling in. Also, as they're looking at safety aspects to the property, anything else to add to that?
No, but water pressure at fire hydrants, how are we getting, you know, water utilities to the building? A lot of where the district's snow removal starts and stops. A lot of things that just in that collaboration come together out of those conversations, which in the end lead to a successful project, really important dialogue.
So that kind of gets us to our next step in the quarterly scheduled updates. July 9th would be our next update. If we have design phase work before then, then I would propose we move it up to June 18th and have those plans in front of the board as soon as we have them. So that would be kind of the next steps and, and I guess soft permission to say if it's ready, bring it, bring it early and don't be set. I don't want some board members out on July 9th too, so June 18th potentially probably have everyone here and it could be advantageous. Any questions?
So the first bids will go out roughly August, September?
Right now, that's the plan, yeah. Right now, that's the plan. The team's still looking at the right targets. Tariffs is a dialogue right now, a significant dialogue. They're looking closely at are there advantages to getting out ahead on some things, even pulling that forward a little bit further. The team is, uh, one of the benefits of having a construction manager on a project like this is that they are already planning the construction phasing. So they're thinking about where to fence, where does the fencing go? How do we keep students safe for multiple school years as this, this gets built? How do we get equipment on and off of this site where we have, you know, hundreds of cars coming on off? You know, hundreds of buses, it feels like, but lots of buses coming on and off of that site, right? A lot's got to happen to keep everybody safe and successfully build that. So as they're thinking about bid packages, as they're thinking about the design of the building, they're also very closely looking at how they're going to build it. And so they, so that's a part of the, the layer there, I think as well, Mike, is that they're assessing, August is the current target for the first bid package. There may be a potential earlier one, but we'll know a little bit more about that as we get down the line.
Perhaps also, and maybe this is, maybe Mr. Daniels could help with this as well. There's, um, we're doing $12 million roughly of work this summer. I'm guessing a lot of that is going to be done through the district rather than through CD Smith? And is that, what kind of cost savings are we seeing from that?
Yeah, I can start with that, Andy, and then you can feel free to, if you'd like. So right now, that 11.7 million that's proposed for the summer is all going through the district directly. So none of that scope is going through the architects or the construction managers. That was a strategic decision upfront by the district was to look closely at what scope could the, the department manage without hiring additional consultants to support and oversee? And there are certain projects like replacing a roof or, you know, updating some windows that you don't necessarily need an architectural set of drawings for. And we have vendors already repairing roofs every year. So we already have folks that we work with regularly. So Andy and I have, have in a couple categories looked at creating some RFPs so he can go to multiple vendors and look at strategies for how best to align those with not overwhelming his team, which will be a part of what's coming up next month is how do you manage this much more work on top of what we already are doing, which is a real thing we got to keep an eye on. So what's proposed here is, is all through the district. None of this will be through PRA or CD Smith. But as we look forward, there is some scope that will. So there's some bathroom renovations and there's some site work that we have asked PRA to take a look at because it will need an architectural stamp, but that's not within this, this core scope. So. So, um, yeah, we are definitely seeing some savings. But I don't want to make it sound like CD Smith was going to like blow out some numbers or anything like that, right? But working with like our roofing consultants that we've already had a partnership with, that also guides us to competitively bid out roofing. We saw a lot of contractors show up for like pre-bids, submit proposals. And I saw significant savings in just roofing alone. Again, those monies will be redirected back into other projects. I have seen a few projects come back a little overbid, right? Lighting specifically at Roddenwood. So hopefully at the end of this, all those dollars will shift to the appropriate places. We will likely be able to see some additional projects get done. For example, we were targeting those priority one projects from the facility study. I'm hoping that maybe we'll be able to use some of those funds to start getting some priority two done out of that facility study. Or if we see that we maybe need some additional funds to do some of the great things at the high school, maybe it goes there, but that's, then we'll know more about that later on. But, you know, we've even, we've even revisited cost packages and cost, late labor costs and things like that with our partners that we've already established good relationships with, right? So a good example of that would be our mechanical contractor. They did surveys for us. They gave us a lot of data around our mechanical systems. So I didn't want to shut the door on them and have somebody buy out that, those projects because they were going to come in a little bit. So we sat down, Hacker and I sat down with them, had them relook at their labor rates, look at their purchasing programs, use some of our purchasing programs. So that's coming in as a very positive number as well. But again, there will, there will be some, some that comes back low and some that's, you know, not so good. And, you know, at the end of it, I think we're going to be in a really good spot. And you'll see some of that. I'll share that at my, my update. But, you know, really when we get to about 2020, we're really going to know where we land, so. Yeah, there has been some scope, Mike, just at the high school in particular, where it was determined that the team felt it be most advantageous to the district to include it in the CD Smith scope, meaning like some flooring and some ceilings. That were CIP bucketed things, but it seemed like if we bid them all by themselves versus bid them with all the ceilings, we're going to get a far better cost per square foot for ceilings if it's a part of a much bigger package, right? So that's been very line-by-line strategy around what should go into which bucket? Who's going to manage that? And so tracking that very, very closely. So if you recall, there's $21.9 million for CIP. At the end of the day, I was looking to manage around $17 million of that. The rest of that went back to the CD Smith bucket, not just for the efficiency of doing some of the same work. That is definitely a key factor. But the other factor is, at the end of the day, when I watch it at high school, I don't want to see like the ceilings I did clashing with the ceilings they did or the flooring that I did clashing with the flooring that they did. Like, I want that to be seamless as we walk through the high school so that we don't necessarily fill that older section of the building versus the newer sections. So that was another strategy of why we turned some of that over to CD Smith through Keri.
Thanks. Anybody else have questions? Comments? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Technology report, Vasilinsky, please.
Good evening.
Evening.
This year's technology report, I'm going to just highlight a few things. I know you have some things in front of you that you had to preview. Many of the things kind of stay static, if you will, from year to year. So I thought I would spend some time on some, two areas that we've been really focusing on this current school year as it relates to technology. So keeping in mind that technology does both the, I call it the nuts and bolts, like the technical aspect of it and then the instructional side of the house. So let's start with this kind of the nuts on both sides. As we think about some of the changes that you're currently seeing, we've been spending a lot of time this year reevaluating our cybersecurity plans and looking at some of those things as ever going. And just for an example, saw yesterday a new word, quishing, which is about QR code phishing basically, and using QR codes to take you to places that you shouldn't, as an example. So some of our work this year, as you think about good cybersecurity plans, everything from, you know, kind of your network and end layers and then some of those technical aspects to user training, to try to mitigate and minimize some of those users clicking on things that hopefully what they don't click on, as well as something that I highlighted in our plan, taking that also to the next level. And that is, we don't have a cybersecurity expert in-house. We would never be able to afford to hire someone in a, in a school district in that way. But we were fortunate enough, Mr. Cromie and I, to write a grant that was through the state to get us some funding to help at, at another extra layer, which is called managed detection and new services and a response. And so what that does is, working with a company, we selected Arctic Wolf, similar to a CrowdStrike, if you've heard of them, and Sentinel One and some other companies. And what they'll be able to do is continue to watch our wallet files, analyze our network, give us feedback. But what I'm most excited about is they have cybersecurity experts on, experts on that we'll get to meet with on a regular basis to help build our strategies and our planning. That's part of that process.
Can you just repeat what that area of focus was that we got with the grant? It was some term that I wasn't familiar with.
Yeah, managed detection and response. Thank you. And so, so we're excited about that. They can help us do like our incident response plan. So if you do have a phishing attack, how do you respond? If you have a malware, how do you respond? If you have a ransomware, how do you respond? But they'll also work with us on, on the proactive side. What can we do to harden our systems, our network, our situations to hopefully never be in those situations where you have a ransomware attack on your network? So that's something we've been spending a lot of time on. With that, related to that, it's helped us move forward. We had two retirements also in our, our department. And so having some new dynamic in our team too, to help bring in some people who have a little bit different background and expertise and experience with some of that to help us build that cybersecurity awareness. So that's something we've been spending a lot of time on and will continue to. It's not going to go away. It's one of those things that's going to be forever changing and just trying to stay ahead of the next new thing that's out there that might create risks for us as a, as a system. And the second thing I want to highlight from the report is another hot topic in the industry, AI. And so as we talk about the instructional side of the house and as AI continues to evolve, I shared with you guys last year that we started some work around developing some staff and student guidelines and what that might look like as it relates to AI and embracing that AI is not going to go away. And so how can we leverage that in the instructional space? So our current AI team is looking at building some other ideas and ways that we can start looking at how can we implement that in an instructional way with some strategy, strategy to that. So not just throwing students in AI tools, we know they're using them anyway, right? Outside of class. But how can we teach them about the best uses of them, how to use them, how to leverage them? I, I like to equate the two. We taught students how to use a calculator. They still are okay with math, right? We taught them how to use the internet and search things currently. And AI, I think, is just that next generation of tool that we need to, to embrace and work toward how we can use that and leverage that in instruction. So that's some of the work we're doing on the instructional side as we go forward. And with that, I'm going to just highlight those two things, but, oh, I'll highlight one more thing. The five-year plan is also here in, in that. And so the five-year plan is our hardware replacement cycle specifically, the things that will be coming up in the next five years that will be ready for replacements. So not only just our traditional computer replacements and such, I'll just highlight in the next year and a half or so, we'll be looking at Wi-Fi. Our Wi-Fi system is aging out and it won't be supported soon. So that'll be something we'll need to, I'll be starting this fall, like starting to revisit that with different vendors and start thinking about what that will look like. And you'll see that in the, in the plans in the next, within the next two years. Any questions?
Let me know that.
Yes, I'm wondering, what about storage in our record retention? I mean, we see all these emails and all this stuff. I mean, we were talking about.
Yes.
Free servers you got in the back room.
Yes, so storage is a big deal as well. So legally, we have to, there's certain records retention laws that we have to follow and retain for seven years, retaining every incoming outgoing email, I'll say, and some of those pieces. So, oh, right now, we've not hit those limits. A lot of that email, of course, is in our Google ecosystem. Google just recently, within the last couple of years, have now set an upper limit for school districts. I think we're only about maybe 30% of the total stories they're allowing us. So we're, we're not there yet, so that's good. And then also, yes, we do have file server storage here as well for some of our older records and things that maybe are not in the Google ecosystem that we continue to manage and, and maintain.
And Google is no charge, right? Just help?
Uh, Google, there's different levels now of Google. So there's free Google and then there's a one cost of Google and another cost of Google and another cost of Google. So those have all changed over time as well, especially since, since COVID. So we are paying a, a fee right now for our Google space.
Thank you.
Do we think there, what, what do we think costs might be for what AI would be going forward? Or do we, do we have any idea? Is that, is that too far away?
Uh, I think it's a little bit too far away. And I think it's, you know, to my perspective, and the group has been working on this, is AI is just like another, any other tool. And so we have to decide what things we want to use the free version for, if you will, and what things we might want to use a paid version for. I think in the AI space, student safety and safety of our information and data and what kids might put in there is really high. A lot of AI tools are now still staying 18 and older and insert things like that. So from a data privacy and some of those pieces, we're going to, I guess, go more cautiously for that. Some of those paid services then guarantee some of those things of COPA and FERPA and some of those other guarantees that we want with other student data privacy aspects. So those are some of the things that we would be looking at. Google just came out with finally adding Gemini into that agreement space for free now for education, which it hadn't been. It was going to be a paid for service. So some of those things are coming and evolving over time. So I think it's just a little too early to know. But also, we have to make, just like prioritizing everything else, is this a space where we're going to decide to spend money on an application or a tool for both keeping students safe and protecting that data piece and/or because it does that so well? And I'm thinking more in terms of like the generative AI, where like a chat GPT, where you're putting stuff in and getting things out. We're seeing across the board, even with our teaching and learning areas, so our SAVUS new ELA curriculum is coming out with some AI embedded features within their curriculum, digital curriculum materials. So we're kind of watching that. So those things are embedded all the time now. I think we're going to see that explode and how we leverage those as a system is yet to be determined.
Thank you. Eric, please.
So kind of dovetailing with what Mr. Schaefer said about pooling resources. I mean, are we kind of on our own with Franklin and we have to budget and we have to just maintain our own? Or is it, is there a way to collaborate and communicate and share costs with other districts? Or how does that work?
Yeah, I think there's a couple of pieces that we have done some shared costs with currently. So our fiber infrastructure, as I shared previously, that previous years, I can highlight again, we're part of the weekends consortium group, right? And so sharing resources of fiber and connectivity and, and some of those resources to give us that multiple ways in and out for our internet access and redundancy and some of those pieces. There's definitely more growth and opportunity, I think, there too, as well as we continue to evolve and have some of those needs that might be shared services. Also sharing some on the instructional side, like, and even cybersecurity, kind of sharing some of those planning pieces. We are fortunate in the state of Wisconsin to have the Wisconsin Cybersecurity Team, which are all volunteers who have been trained. So if we have an incident, we can contact them, and it's a pretty amazing process. Having the opportunity to get to sit in on some of that is to, IT specialists across throwing, have you thought about this? 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 These are some things you should consider. These are some things you could do now to mitigate maybe a situation, but here are some things you could do in the future to try to harden your systems against those kinds of attacks in the future. So definitely a lot of human collaboration, as well as some of the other infrastructure pieces.
I think just when I look at the five-year plan though, is this like, I mean, you just keep, we get this five years done and we just repeat? Because this is, it's definitely last five years, so you just replace it all every five years, or?
Most things are done on every five-year basis when it comes to hardware. I would say that's an accurate statement. There's other things, this is, because some of this is Fund Forty-Six, and this is really the hardware replacement pieces. There's going to be software and other systems and tools that are not represented in this five-year plan. So this is mostly our hyper-replacement cycle. If I can make something last more than five years, we will, and sometimes it's four years. You know, it really depends on how fast things change, what our needs are, and how that equipment can handle the things that we're needing it to do.
And the costs go down as stuff gets smaller and faster and?
That doesn't seem to.
It just might warm it.
Yeah, I always feel like there's, like you get more functionality, but the price just kind of sits there on a very low level basis for the most part.
And worse that with fiber, I mean, our backbone is in the ground and that's, no investment needed there.
Not at this point.
What else? All right, thank you very much. All right, health insurance, Mr. Cromie, Ms. Laitour, please.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about our health plan, where it is, and provide some options for you. We have a couple of guests here tonight. We have Amanda Elliott, who has been in front of you before from Brown and Brown. She leads our consultant team. Megan Myers is next to her. Megan will be more focused on the clinic portion, so when we talk about our next particular item. So let's get started. We're going to talk about our current health plan structure, our direct contract partners, the current state of Franklin Public Schools healthcare, current financial status review. So just an update from where we were in January and a preview to what'll be coming in May. And then some possible options for our July first renewal. It's important to note, we are not adjusting dental and vision, or at least the plan designs. Dental's entirely paid by the district, vision is entirely paid by the employee. However, vision premiums to keep that plan will increase by four point five percent. So again, those are just statisticians' number, calculating the plan out and what it'll take to keep it where it's at. Dental will see no increase from the district standpoint. Our current health plan structures, as you know, we have two health plans. We have our four hundred, eight hundred dollar deductible health plan, Plan One. We have our five thousand, ten thousand dollar deductible, Plan Two. You can go down the list and see the myriad of different copays or co-insurance. Plan One does have a fifteen point five percent premium share that was adjusted with last year. So prior to that, we were at twelve. Plan Two has maintained its five percent premium share for employees. And then again, we added Garner last year. So the Garner reimbursement for Plan One was one thousand, two thousand. And for Plan Two is four thousand, eight thousand dollars. And then we did adjust cash and lieu as well. Previously, I can't remember exactly what it was, but now it's currently five thousand nine hundred four dollars. I think it was six thousand seven hundred ninety-two before, so an adjustment to that. We do have four direct contract partners. We have ATI for physical therapy. We have MDI for diagnostic imaging. We have Regenexx, again, a non-surgical pathway to muscle issues, ligament tears, and tendons and things like that. And we have Midwest Orthopedic Specialty Hospital. For July of twenty-fourth through February of twenty-five, ATI is estimated to have saved, or I should say, reduced our claims by a hundred seventy-seven thousand and change. So essentially, that's taking our contracted amount per episode or four hundred twenty-six service dates versus what the average market is for a physical therapy session. Going across medical diagnostic imaging, approximately seven thousand four hundred forty-five dollars in claims reduction. Again, that's taking the actual cost we pay MDI versus estimated cost in the area for that similar procedure. Regenexx, estimated claims reduction of two hundred, two thousand eight hundred sixty-eight dollars. Again, that's taking a repair done through their process versus what would a surgical option be to do that same repair? And then Midwest Orthopedic Hospital, twenty-six thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars. And you can see the number of procedures for each of those. So while MDI and Midwest Orthopedics are not like bellowing savings reductions, they're still producing some claims reduction. And one of the important pieces to note between kind of claim savings as claims reduction is essentially, we are not paying those dollar amounts by not having a direct contract. So for instance, if we didn't have an ATI direct contract, we would have paid a hundred seventy-seven thousand six hundred thirty-eight dollars more. We just did not pay it for here. We didn't get a coupon that actually provided us a check for a hundred seventy-seven thousand. We just did not have to pay that additional amount or estimated that additional amount.
Real quick, if a person goes to MDI for an MRI, there's no cost to the employee?
Correct. ATI, no cost. Regenexx, no cost.
So for all of those, it's no cost, but the employee still has the choice, I want my MRI at Aurora?
Hundred percent.
I'm going to go to MDI.
Yep. The only difference with the MASH as compared to the others, when you go in for your initial consultation, you're paying your copay deductible, whatever have you. If they determine it is now a surgical procedure, from the time you're admitted to the hospital through its post-op of a couple of days, that is what is considered in the bundle. Other things are considered regular components of visit with a physician. But physical therapy is covered both at the MASH or through ATI. MASH, if you have a surgical procedure, we cover that physical therapy if you want to continue there, or you could go to ATI. Both will work equally well. We wanted to provide a Garner update as well. So this is updated as of a couple of weeks ago. So I'm going to start in the lower left with the bucket. So first of all, we had three hundred, we have three hundred fifty-seven eligible employees. Now, that will fluctuate monthly based on the number of employees on the plan, but it's typically around three hundred fifty to three hundred sixty employees. Sixty-nine percent of that group has engaged with Garner in some fashion. So they've been in the app, they've created an account, they might have searched up physician or physicians, but at least they're engaged with the app. Ninety-eight percent of people who have engaged in the app have received a recommendation for a physician. So they've typed in internist and doctors come up, or they typed in primary care physician and physicians come up. Garner will tell you that that is very high for our first year of engagement, so we're happy about that. On the upper left-hand corner, you'll see they're estimating a claims reduction of about three hundred eighty-five thousand by choosing a doctor or moving forward with a doctor who happens to be on the Garner list. Ninety-seven percent of people have received some sort of savings from that, so have engaged and gotten a, I should say, ninety-seven percent have received a full reimbursement of that particular usage. And the average number of specialties recommended per an engaged member is three. Off on the right-hand side, in kind of the larger one, and again, it's very small print, but you will see the top specialties and the number of relationships or engagements, and then the average savings for those relationships. So overall, Garner is producing some savings for us, producing some cost avoidance essentially. And we're hoping to improve that as the years go on, but Garner will tell you for a first year, we did very well.
Did we have any people, it would be in the Plan One model, who got more reimbursed than their deductible?
Hundred percent. Yep. So your deductible in Plan One is four hundred, eight hundred. So health plans are really rated on the single basis is very easy. If I'm a single individual, it's four hundred dollars. A family plan is rated on two individuals. So for instance, if it's just you and a spouse, both of you have a deductible of four hundred dollars. That aggregate is eight hundred. If you have a family of three people, your family aggregate is still eight hundred dollars. So all three of you at some point could total eight hundred, or two specific individuals could total eight hundred, and that would account for. But along with meeting that deductible, there's still copays up to that max out-of-pocket, which right now our sits around nine thousand and eighteen thousand for a family. So people in Plan One are still receiving those deductible, copay reimbursements, or potentially a pharmaceutical reimbursement, if that's coming through that, up to that thousand dollars or two thousand for the family. So some are receiving more dollars than, I don't have a specific amount, but possible. A couple of important data points as we're going to get into talking about our health plan. For the calendar year twenty twenty-four, so January first through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four, eighty-nine point one percent of our individuals on our health plan had less than one thousand dollars of out-of-pocket health expense. Ninety-seven point seven percent had less than two thousand dollars of out-of-pocket health expense. Now, we do not have a breakdown between Plan One and Plan Two, but essentially, what that is telling you is that the vast majority of us are not having catastrophic health issues. We're going to the doctor on a yearly basis, maybe semi-annual. Kids are going to the doctor, spouses going to the doctor, but it's very routine things, possible urgent care visit, strep throat type of thing. We're not seeing a catastrophic issue going into the hospital. So just providing some data points for that as an overall reference to our current health plan. Our current health plan, these three graphs come directly from our Brown and Brown packet that we get every month. So I call it a packet, but it's about twenty-five to thirty pages or so of data, of assorted data. In the far left, the only red box you really need to take a look at is the one hundred fifteen point eight percent. So currently, for every dollar in premium we're bringing in, we're paying out one dollar and sixteen cents in order to run our health plan. So as you know, that'll go underwater very quick. The graph in the upper right-hand column, or upper right side, has four components to it. So on the far left is the PPO Plan Four Hundred. So in there, our average per employee per month cost for an individual in that plan, or sorry, our year-to-date cost for an individual in that plan is two thousand two hundred eighty-two dollars. That second column for our Plan Two, five thousand, ten thousand, it's nine hundred thirty dollars. Our pre-sixty-five retirees come next at two thousand three hundred eighty-four dollars, and our post-sixty-five retirees at one thousand thirty-eight. It's really important to know when we talk about those last two columns, the retiree column, they're in Plan One. So while they're broken out, because we look at them a little bit differently, they're in Plan One. So essentially, we have three groups hitting that Plan One versus the Plan Two option. And then what's coming in the lower portion is percentage of individuals versus cost. The only component that's not in the cost is our fixed cost, which are two things. One, what we pay UMR to adjudicate claims, so we pay them in a per employee per month fee, and then our stop-loss coverage. So what we're really looking at is true medical cost claims as compared to our whole plan. So those dark blue bars represent percent of population in the plan. The light blue bars represent cost, medical cost. You'll notice that the light blue bars don't add up to a hundred percent. Again, we're not including stop-loss coverage payment, and we're not including our UMR cost per employee per month. We're just talking, what is the straight medical cost portion? Plan Two really only affects nine percent. So again, those other three groupings affect about ninety-one percent of our medical cost. Our current financial situation, so our preliminary budget, again, when we bring that in January, that's very preliminary. One point one five million dollars in the red. Currently, we're sitting at one million eighty-two thousand dollars in the red. Part of that budget maintains the two point nine five percent aggregate raised to all employees, three point four five percent to professional staff. That has not changed. Ten percent healthcare increase, that has not changed either. Our enrollment projections, we've taken a further look at those, especially now that open enrollment applications are nearing their end, to see how are we fitting in with those at grade levels? Our department budget, zero percent budgeting process netted reductions. And I would like to do a shout-out to each of our department member or department heads, and I won't do it individually, but in aggregate, we're about two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand dollars less. So what that tells me is our departments, and in seeing their budget worksheets, I get to see this too, but really took a fine-tooth comb to say, this is exactly what I'm going to need for next year in listing things out and approximate costs versus just saying, well, last year I had a million dollars, I'm going to need a million dollar, million fifty thousand this year because things are going to go up. So really taking a look at each of those. So I thought that was a really positive thing, and again, shout-out to our directors for doing that. You'll notice the next two bullets have an asterisk by them. So one is a CIP budget reduction, and I'm going to wrap the next one right up into it so that we can answer that question right off the bat. An addition of an electrician. So those two items really work together, along with Andy Daniel's buildings and grounds budget. So as you know, last year, we added an HVAC technician. Andy Daniels will be bringing information to us about how that HVAC technician has done cost savings or things coming back online faster, all of that included. Andy and I will be bringing an electrician, kind of that same concept to you in an upcoming board meeting. But ultimately, there are things in our CIP projects, CIP projects outlined, that we're paying an electrician to do. So we're paying for that service as part of the things that we need to do. So bringing an electrician onboard helps solve that. It also helps solve some of Andy's operating budget and things that we would pay for an electrician do inside of our operating budget. On top of that, it also helps with our HVAC technician, because there are times where he's working with a paid electrician or someone we're outsourcing side by side as those two things come together. So I don't want us to take a look at, well, thankfully, we passed a referendum, we're going to decrease the capital improvement budget. The capital improvement budget is decreasing in dollars, not scope of work, because of bringing on an electrician should the board approve to do that. If the board does not approve the electrician, that million eighty-two is exactly the same. It just gets a portion back into capital improvement budget, it gets a portion back into Andy's buildings and grounds budget. So it's a net zero cost, and we'll talk about that at a further board meeting. Property and liability insurances are increasing, I think I talked about that back in January. But we did see a pretty good workers' comp insurance reduction, meaning people are coming to work faster. We have as many or more instances as we've had in the past. But if you return to work within three days or less, only a certain portion of that is counted towards workers' comp, injury or no injury. A certain portion is counted towards workers' comp. So ultimately, we had a great year, and we're going to see a reduction in that. We do have a few increases in retiree payments since we met in January, and those are due to retirements coming in. You would have seen those in the consent agenda employee portion. Transportation, we talked about our increase back in January, that's contractual. We have an inclusion of the health clinic costs. So even though we're going to talk about the health clinic, we're going to ask the board at our next board meeting to approve one. I wanted to make sure that that cost is in here, so we're thinking about that holistically. Not that that is an add-on after we've talked about the budget, but as a component of it. The only additional revenue from the state is three hundred twenty-five dollars per resident student. So that's the only inclusion we have. As was mentioned in Dr. Bennon's report, like, we don't know what's coming out from the state. So better safe than sorry, than relying on something we're not sure is coming. So now we're going to talk about some options. There is a couple of slide adjustments from what I forwarded you. So I moved two things up that I want to talk about first, because they are going to happen, and then we'll talk about options one through ten. The very first one, we are going to adjust our pharmacy benefit manager for domestic medication. So currently, we're working with two vendors. We have a domestic vendor, we have an international vendor. Drexie is our current domestic vendor. We are going to move to EVO. EVO is just another domestic vendor who has contracts for medication. Ultimately, there's a small increase upfront in procurement costs, but because of how rebates work and how EVO's contract is written to return rebates to the district, we'll see a two hundred nineteen percent increase in our rebate back to the district, ultimately saving us about a hundred twenty-one thousand. That's included in all the things we're going to talk about today. So I don't want us to think like, oh, okay, well, now we're a hundred twenty-one thousand closer. This is included in that. From an employee standpoint, the only thing they will notice is a new medical card. Nothing else will change behind the scenes from them. The new medical card will come, and they'll just have that one when they go to a physician and have to replace that. The second thing we're going to add is the addition of a Samaritan fund. So a Samaritan fund is really used for a high-cost claimant. So think of an individual who just had maybe one of the worst days of their lives and received a terrible diagnosis. That's when the Samaritan- That's when the Samaritan fund can potentially help them. So it really helps both sides of the equation. It helps the district, but it also helps the employee. So I'll start with the employee portion first. Number one, an employee's received, again, that catastrophic diagnosis and all of the things that are going to go with it are medical costs, depending on what plan there are, trying to even route through all of those particular pieces. Moving to the Samaritan fund takes at least the pressure of payment off of them and all things for them and dependents now become cost free because they're part of the Samaritan plan. From the district standpoint, it removes that individual from our health plan for a period of time while they're on the Samaritan plan. We do pay an upfront cost of fifty five thousand dollars plus fifteen thousand dollars per dependent. Typically, in all of those cases, we would end up paying a minimum of a hundred twenty five thousand dollars because they're going to hit the stop loss. And then it's whatever happens to the stop loss premium future years. So think car accident, right? You have a car accident, you pay your deductible, but for several years, you're paying increased premiums because of a car accident. So same philosophy here. A couple of notes, this is not going to be for everybody. One, it has to happen at the right time for the district. So at open enrollment period, a person could opt into the Samaritan fund. Or if there's a loss of insurance, one of those family events type of things where you can change insurance at that particular time. So it's not going to be for everybody. Ultimately, this year, we have seven people who have hit our stop loss insurance who could clearly qualify. We have five who are on their way. So while it's slightly higher than normal in Brown and Brown's experience with groups our size, similar things, they estimate about one person to move forward. It's important to note that the district will never know about that individual receiving that diagnosis until they decide that the Samaritan fund is for them and they contact the Samaritan fund and we're notified that that person's now coming off our health plan and they're going to the Samaritan fund. We'll provide all the information about how to get there and things like that, but it's not something they come apply to us for. That is an individual thing that they apply for. Samaritan fund will determine if that's right for you. So a family that has no ailments but just wants to go on the Samaritan fund because there'd be zero dollars of out of pocket, Samaritan fund will say you do not qualify, you do not have a catastrophic health event, you're not going to meet the requirements to be on here. So we are going to add that. Again, it's no cost to us, it can help in the long run, both an employee and the district. Again, that estimated savings of a hundred sixty one thousand is wrapped into all the things we're talking about.
Clarifying question on that, you said they can opt in during open enrollment. So insurance plan starts a month later, you get a catastrophic diagnosis, you wait until the next year to get into the Samaritan fund, it's not sliding.
You wait until the next open enrollment period or if there's a drop in insurance. Okay, so here we're going to start with our ten options. One of them has two components, and I'll kind of explain why the two component pieces. What's important to note is all of the options are just options. If there's something you like about one of them, but you'd want to see it different. So for instance, you'd want to see a different deductible that's presented, or you don't think we should have co-insurance on that particular piece. We won't have an answer for what that would cost tonight, but that's something we can go back and do. Again, we're a million dollar, million eighty seven thousand in the red. I'm not thinking about a million eighty seven thousand coming from health. There's going to be some other avenues to figure that out as we go through the course of the next four months until we get to the next school year. As you know, last year when Laura presented our retention rate of ninety percent, that was our highest in like five years. So we still will have people leave the district regardless of what is decided tonight. People are still going to leave, so we'll probably see some savings there that we did last year. People might move plans that helps like see overall budget savings. So those things will still happen, just as they did last year at this particular time. So the current plan, option one, is to change nothing about our plan. However, in order to implement that, we will have to increase premiums by twenty seven, twenty one percent. So what you see on this particular document, and these are all very much the same. You're going to see the plan on the side, plan one single, plan one family, plan two single, plan two family. It's going to have the current cost, the new yearly cost, and then the additional employee premium for that particular option, we'll see that all the way through that same style. So in order to maintain our current health plan, just as it is today, starting July first, we'd have to increase premiums by twenty one percent. That's increased premiums for employees, increased premiums for the district. So this changes nothing about how it operates today. Does that all make sense? Okay. If we do that, that will add seven hundred six thousand dollars to the current one million dollar deficit. So we'd be at about one point seven, close to one point eight million dollars. Option two. This is again, no change to the plan. We will see that for options one, two, three, and four. No change to the plan. We're going to implement that twenty percent increased rate, because if we're not changing the plan, that's what we will need to do to fund the plan. What this option says is we will freeze the district contribution at plan two amounts. So plan two amounts are lower than plan one. So essentially stating plan two is the max the district will pay towards any particular health plan. That's what option two represents. Again, the four plans going down the side, current yearly cost, new yearly cost, additional employee premium. If we don't do anything, but we keep twenty, we keep plan two rates. Sorry, that will add about forty thousand dollars to the budget to do that. So we have two plans, we have plan one and plan two. The district provides more funding for plan one than it does for plan two, both on a single and a family level. So option two is saying the district will continue to provide that plan two funding, but for both health plans. There will not be a distinction between plan one and plan two and what the district will provide. Yes, for plan one employees. You'll notice plan two premiums are the same. Option three. For plan one. Plan two will be exactly the same as it was in plan one. Those dollars wouldn't change. Option three, again, no change to the plan, implementing the new twenty one percent rates to keep our plan exactly as it is. So so far, we haven't changed anything there. This is now saying the district would cap its increase at six percent. So currently, we're budgeting ten percent. So this would cap it at six percent. You'll see again, the plans, the current yearly rate, new rate, additional premium. This would save about two hundred fifty six thousand dollars to the budget, because again, we're estimating ten percent or we're budgeting ten percent. This would back that down to six. No, I'd rather you ask them as along the way. So that was just working with Brown and Brown to find a number that still provides some increase to the district, but provides some decrease in the budgeted amount. Again, everything is flexible. You could say, what does this look like at five? What does it look like at eight? You're seeing in the right hand column, premiums are going up. That's what the yellow column is on the right hand side. Those are additional employee premiums.
In this case, with this situation of plan one family would now pay forty seven fifty more.
More.
Every year.
One of the reasons I included that eighty nine point nine percent paid less than a thousand out of pocket and ninety seven point seven percent paid less than two thousand out of pocket is in direct relation to this. What additional premium increases are versus what you might spend out of pocket. Because a premium, a premium increase is automatically coming out. Option four is no, again, no change to the plan. So all the things in health plan one, all the things in health plan two staying exactly the same. We have to implement twenty one percent increase to rates in order to do that. This would say, we're going to cap district contributions at what they are today. So whatever the health plan is being paid for today for plan one or plan two is staying the same as it is today. Again, you'll see the additional employee premium on the right hand side. This would save that six hundred forty one thousand or six hundred forty two thousand dollars from the district budget that's currently budgeted. So options one through four, keep the health plan exactly the same. It's just shifting, where does the cost to pay for that plan come from in different variances? So I just want to run through this piece one more time, and I think this is really important to understand, is plan two only affects nine percent of medical costs. So the idea here is we could take the largest swing of plan two, and we're going to have very minimal impact on the health plan. So you'll see that the adjustments that come through in the next options five through eight focus on health plan one. And again, in order to gain any traction, that's where those changes will have to come from. Again, we do not have to decide, or should say, the board does not have to decide to do that. That's up to the purview of you. But from an explanation standpoint, that's what will have to happen if those changes are made to provide any savings whatsoever to the health plan. So option five, you're going to see an A and a B for a moment, but option five revolves around these changes, so both A and B. Plan one would change the deductible from four hundred, eight hundred to two thousand, four thousand. You would see a co-insurance from zero percent move to fifteen percent. The Garner reimbursement would increase from the current one thousand, two thousand to the two, to two thousand, four thousand, and those changes are in red. Plan two, again, nothing changes there. This was a big swipe from last year's two thousand, four thousand to five thousand, ten thousand. So for five A, in order to run this plan as it's adjusted on the previous screen, would cost an additional seven point eight percent. And you'll see those premium adjustments on the side for the employee. This would save a hundred forty one thousand dollars from the current budgeted amount. Five B says, we're just going to cap that district increase to your point at six percent. Again, not necessarily an arbitrary number, but a number that can be easily adjusted. That would save two hundred fifty six thousand, seven hundred eighty three dollars. Again, the rates still need to go up by seven point eight percent to run that health plan. So you would see a slightly higher employee premium change in this one than you will the previous slide. But again, it's reducing the district amount to six percent. Option six is to modify health plan one a little bit further. So as you saw for option five, the four hundred, eight hundred dollar deductible went to two thousand, four thousand. Option six is to say, to take it to three thousand six hundred or three thousand, six thousand. And this is being brought forth just so you can see what a change in that deductible will look like. So this would change our health increase from seven point eight to now six point eight, so it would reduce it a percent. And you'll see the new potential employee premiums saves about two hundred five thousand dollars to the overall budget. I didn't run a six percent at this because it's pretty close at six point eight. Option seven, and this one came directly from our Better Place to Work Committee, is just to see, what does it look like with a single plan option? So we ran it as plan two, knowing again, ninety one percent of our medical spend is plan one. So that's where we have to make the adjustment to make any headway on it. So you will see, we have no plan one premiums up there because plan one would be totally gone. So in order, I wanted to keep this idea of the slides being the same. So just blacked out plan one. You'll see plan twos, plan two single and plan two families. So you'll see an additional premium increase for those people that are within those plans already. So if I'm a plan two single, my premium would go up fifty five dollars, fifty six cents. If I'm a plan two family, my premium would go up a hundred twenty five dollars, seventy eight cents. What's below that is if I'm in plan one single, I'll see a reduction in my premium of one thousand four hundred fifty nine dollars, fifty six cents. And if I'm in a family premium, I would see a reduction of three thousand, three hundred nine dollars, twenty two cents. This is increasing the entire plan by ten point six percent. So to move to this would still be ten point six percent. So a little bit more than we budgeted at ten percent. But you will notice it saves five hundred seventy thousand from the budget. Why that is, is because we're paying significantly more for that premium in plan one. So we'd be shifting all of those people to plan two. That's where that savings come. Even though we've only budgeted ten percent overall, we've budgeted on a plan one and a plan two. Shifting to all plan two does save dollars because those premiums are significantly less, both from the employee and the employer. Option eight, again, comes out of Better Place to Work, moving to a four tier option. A plan one deductible and Garner adjustment. So plan one deductible, or I'm sorry, the Garner, plan one deductible is two thousand, four thousand. So you'll see that going along the side. So you'll notice now there's eight rows, plan one single, plan one employee plus spouse, plan two employee plus dependents and plan one family. So you'll notice the plan one single would see a reduction in their plan, cost of about three hundred twenty six dollars, forty five cents. Family goes up about twelve hundred dollars. The reason that is, is when you start breaking apart that family into more tiers, so now an employee plus spouse or an employee plus dependent, you're really losing people off of that family plan, which does help subsidize the entire plan in general. So that that family plan now becomes less rich, so to speak, has to be inflated by more premium dollars. The single plan typically is viewed it as being needed to be lower rated. So they have ratings for all of these particular things. So you'd see a premium reduction there, both plan one and plan two. Garner would increase in the plan one option to meet the two thousand, four thousand dollar deductible as well. This has an estimated savings because this option eight, again, caps the district increase at six percent. So again, if we want to see a different cap, we could do that. But at six percent, we're saving two hundred fifty six thousand, seven hundred eighty three dollars from the current budgeted amount. Option nine is a narrow network option. So option nine and ten are going to be narrow network options. The first one being presented to you is called Nexus. Nexus is straight from UMR. The narrow network includes Aurora Children's and the Freiter and Medical College of Wisconsin. Garner is not allowed to be on this, on this plan. So this is a Wisconsin requirement. So it's part of some law that's written somewhere, so we are not able to provide Garner as a reimbursement. We would see a premium increase of sixteen point seven percent to all rates, so both plan one and plan two. You will notice in this one as well, I should, my apologies on plan one and plan two, is they show a three thousand, six thousand dollar deductible, that should still read four hundred, eight hundred. So my apologies for that. So no plan design changes. You'll see a premium increase on the right, and again, narrow network. This will add approximately four hundred thirty thousand as it's currently decided you could cap that premium increase. You could make plan design changes, but as currently designed to keep plan one and plan two in this narrow network, would add four hundred thirty thousand here. Option ten, we talked about Centivo last year. Centivo would also require a remove, removal of Garner. There would be two options here, so this would entirely change our plan one and plan two as they currently exist. We would now have Wisconsin one, Wisconsin two. You'll see the plan designs for Wisconsin two on the left, Wisconsin one on the right. So deductible is different, primary care physi, visit co-pay is different. Basic labs and imaging have some slightly different variations, outpatient or inpatient surgery. And then ER is different, and then drug spend is slightly different for one of those top tier medications. The biggest difference between Wisconsin one and Wisconsin two is that Wisconsin one would allow Aurora. So again, Wisconsin one plan has more cost to the employee on it, but it does allow Aurora as well. In order to run this particular plan, we'd have to increase premiums by fourteen point eight percent. So plan one is really that Wisconsin one, plan two is really that Wisconsin two. So those would be what our premium increases would be to partner with Centivo as it's currently stated. Now again, could we go back and adjust those plans? Sure, we could go back and say, what does it look like at this deductible or whatever have you? Partnering with Centivo, again, as it's currently presented, would add three hundred eight thousand, one hundred thirty eight dollars to the current deficit that we're already taking a look at. Yep.
I feel like last year when you presented Centivo, it was included in the potential cost savings category. What happened between last year and this year with Centivo?
So our need to increase premiums by so much to run our plans inside of that has increased significantly more than last year. So last year, we were budgeting a ten percent to run Centivo was seven ish percent, so automatic decrease. This year, we need to get up to fourteen point eight with Centivo. Yep. Some additional considerations, if options one through ten or any variations of one through ten that you'd want to see, you're not interested in. Potentially eliminating cash and lieu again. So we talked about this last year, right? And we made the one adjustment to cash and lieu. So seventeen point five percent of our employees receive this, we're currently budgeting six hundred, eight thousand dollars. If we entirely eliminate cash and lieu, we know that not everybody will stay off the health plan and we just. know that not everybody will stay off the health plan and we just do a straight reduction of cash and loop. People will jump on. Brown and Brown has estimated approximately a two hundred twenty eight thousand dollar savings with this. And that's the net of that six hundred thousand dollars not paying towards cash and lieu and the amount of people coming on the health plan and the premium share we'd be paying for them. Another possible consideration, if we do not want to do anything with health, we could reduce the salary wage increase, the two point nine five percent for all employees, three point four five percent for our professional staff, every point one percent that would be cited, that would be decided to reduce would save about thirty five thousand, five hundred dollars. The last piece, this came out of last year and just providing a couple of data points for health plan comparison. The first thing I'll preface this with is it is really hard to compare district to district and make apples to apples comparisons. We can look at deductible. We can take a look at premium share. We can take a look at copays and all of those things. But when you start mixing all of those things together, it's a math problem to a very high exponent to try to actually make it apples to apples. But we did bring a couple of bullet points at the top. One of our eighteen comparison districts who are all neighboring or neighboring neighboring, five have multiple health plan options. So we're, we're one of those with a multiple health plan option. Only one of those eighteen is fully funded, seventeen are self-funded. And I will, self-funding is the way to go. But we're cutting out, Mike, you asked a question with Andy Daniels doing the capital improvement project portion of Franklin forward work. And does that save dollars? Yes, because we're not paying a fee to the construction manager. We're not paying a fee to the architect. Same thing with self-funding. Being self-funded means we're not paying a fee to an insurance company to run all of those things. We're paying to adjudicate claims, which we would pay whether we're fully funded or not. We're cutting out that whole other portion and saying, we need to hire Brown and Brown to really help us manipulate all of these other components to make sure they work. Six have a narrow network or narrow network option. So like nine and 10, Nexus or the Centivo. Eleven have an onsite clinic. Twelve have a health risk assessment incentive. So we have a health risk incentive assessment, incentive. And then six have passed an operational referendum in the past five years, and that does not include anybody that went last week. So I did not include them in. The graph below just shows what the low, medium, and high premium rates are for both the employee and employer, what the premium share is and what the deductibles are for those. But again, those things are really hard to look at because we might have a different deductible than somebody else. And then we add in co-insurance and we change all this premium share is a part of their total packet. Like, there's lots of things to consider that make apples to apples really very hard. So let's start with questions.
Before we start, can we, I know there's a lot of questions, and, and I want to get to them all. I think maybe first we should talk about cash and lieu since that was, that was something that happened last year and that's sort of separate from the entire discussion. And I don't know, we talked about a two-year, we talked about a two-year reduction and didn't go with that. But last year, there was a lot of talk that cash and lieu would be, it'd be sort of silly not to have a cash and lieu amount, but we have to find the right amount. And I don't know how people feel about cash and lieu. If there's any, if there's, if there's any, any ideas on what people would like to do with the cash, cash and lieu amount, or if there's any discussion about cash and lieu. Linda, please.
So the fact that we have savings, if we eliminated it, leads me to think that, I mean, we're, we're paying the cash and lieu because it's cheaper to pay the employee than to pay for the plan. But we're not really coming out ahead on that, obviously, because if we eliminate it, we're saving money. So isn't that kind of a no-brainer to, it's not doing what we thought it was going to do? Am I looking at that correctly? The idea is, I'm giving you this so that you don't come on our plan. And then I save money, the difference between what I pay you and what my plan would cost me. But the fact, when you take it all away, and I can still save two hundred twenty thousand means that it's not doing the job it's supposed to do.
Well, I'll answer the first part. The idea of cash and lieu, yes, is to take people from our health plan, move them off of our health plan to some other option. People typically choose it because they have one, have another health option. So whether that's a spouse or if they're 26 or under parent plan, but they have another option. Two, they choose that for a multitude of reasons, but ultimately that's a better option for them financially. So to Linda's point, their money is coming into their pocket in some fashion, whether they're paying less than premium than the five thousand, nine hundred, four dollars or their total health is less than five thousand, nine hundred, four dollars. As to whether it's doing its job or not, I guess you could argue that either way. But cash and lieu typically takes healthier people off your health plan because they're willing to choose a plan that may not be as rich as our plan. It's typically one of what Brown and Brown will tell you. But I will say last year, I think I brought this up last year with cash and lieu. When we first did our investigation, Laura and I, like I was all in on eliminating cash and lieu, and then like seventy percent of our neighbors have some poor cash and lieu options. So like, I will tell you that that changed my health, that my mind and totally eliminating it. I think with everything, there's probably some sort of sweet spot where dropping cash and lieu is still a benefit from the cost to the district to where people are at some point going to jump on. And now we're switching. What is that value? So there's some price point that meets somewhere in the middle that says this is the optimal cash. I don't know what that is like that. But kind of like anything that supply and demand crosses at some point, right? Goes down before it starts coming up. So.
But it's a benefit that other districts do offer. So.
Yeah, a significant amount of other districts do offer.
Different district might be more, you know, might look better because a person could go there and get that.
Almost twenty percent of our employees.
That's a large chunk.
We'll be going to other districts which are chasing the cash and lieu amount that's.
It's part of a total compensation package. I mean, I don't think anybody's going to jump just because they've got, you know, better dry erase board markers on a different district either. But it's part of a whole, you know, compensation package. And if, you know, if you can go somewhere else and take home more money and work in the district that you think might be better financially and possibly, I don't know, culturally or whatever else, yeah, somebody might go to a different district because of that.
I think some people look at, I think many, if not most people, look at their salary and benefits package as a whole. And so if, so if they aren't receiving the benefits of participating in the health insurance in the district, if the district isn't paying some amount towards their health insurance premium, it just doesn't necessarily, they don't come out ahead. I'm sorry, my words aren't making sense. I agree with Auntie.
But it is driven by having options. That's, that drives this decision about cash and lieu is having options. Because you've got to have health insurance. So you're either getting someplace else. And that someplace else can be inuus or could be, I mean, as you said, there's an age limit on my parents' plan. So I know it's going to end. So. And I just doing the math, I don't know. We paid them so we could save money, but we're not saving money. We're paying more. So it's kind of, doesn't make sense to me what to continue it. From the district standpoint, because we are not, we're leaving that money on the table.
You're not trying to convince me. You got to convince the other people.
Does anyone else feel we should eliminate cash and lieu entirely?
I think we got to get there. We don't do it all at once.
I'm asking if anyone else feels that way. I know that you do.
I, I think that there's, I think my opinion would be that we would continue the decrease in cash and lieu based on.
You know, it's really hard to focus.
Please, please. That we would, that there was a, I don't remember the amount, but it was close to five thousand dollars after the second year.
It was dropping at eight, I think it was eight hundred eighty eight dollars. So dropping another eight hundred eighty eight. And that's because it needs to be divisible by 12 to work with payroll. Like, there's no, it could be nine hundred, but that doesn't divide by 12. So trying to divide it out equally to make payroll come on even at the end of the years.
But I, I think that, I think that it can be, the savings is not necessarily all savings. I agree though, Linda, that, that cash and, I would like to see cash and lieu reduced.
Are we commensurate with other districts or is there no way to compare that?
No, that's actually a pretty easier one. We're above the median, but we're not drastically above the median. So I'm just calculating how many people in case you ask me what, if we move to some number, what that would be.
And because these reduction in cash and lieu amounts and their potential cost savings aren't sort of an easy calculation, there's some fancy math that involves how many people would shift to the employee plan.
I wonder if we can see some estimates of reductions in cash and lieu in addition to the elimination of it entirely, because I'm not hearing an appetite for the elimination of cash and lieu entirely on the board level.
But I think, I remember talking about this last year, and I feel like if there was going to be reduction, it was going to be kind of phased versus just, you know, we make the decision at our next meeting, yep, it's gone and it's just like cut off. There could be some discussion around how much in order to stay, you know, even with other districts and give us maybe some savings while also keeping the benefit for staff. But I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think we're at the point now of completely eliminating it.
I don't think so either. I just wanted to talk about that first. It's, it's separate from, it's, it seems like a separate issue from the other. And I, and I, and I'd like to, I don't, I don't want, I don't want to see it, I don't want to see it abandoned. But there was talk, there was a, something on the table last year to increase it the same amount this year as last year, and phase it over two years. And I think we, I'd like to, I'd like to relook at that number for this year. Not, not any further thinking, but just that number for this year.
Well, part of it, I know you're saying it's a separate, and I can see how it is separate. However, I think it is completely tied into our insurance question because if we decide to change a plan and all of a sudden, you know, deductibles or premium shares are different, that might, you know, that might impact somebody's decision cash and lieu wise, based on how much that money is, you know, so that it is all kind of tied together.
So just to give you the values. So last year, we did, proposed a two-year phases. So you'll know, you'll notice there's no recommendation coming before the board this year. So that's a little bit different than last year. No recommendation on cash and lieu or any of the other components that we're talking about. But last year, we did bring a two-year phasing. It was originally nine hundred dollars, but just again, to meet that payroll piece. So it's a reduction of eight hundred eighty eight dollars. So if we follow that same pattern for next year, this would be moving cash and lieu to five thousand, sixteen dollars. I would guess that Brown and Brown would estimate that probably doesn't move anybody onto the health plan because we're still over five thousand dollars. So that would save the district ninety one thousand, four sixty four. And reducing it in that same comparison of eight hundred eighty eight dollars over, sorry, as it was last year.
I mean, do you see this as the benefit of cash and lieu? Is, is it the benefit of the employees? Or is, is it the health insurance that we're trying to give the employees?
I'm saying you will have employees.
It's not a separate benefit. It's, they don't want the benefit. Our goal is to offer a health insurance plan.
Right. But if, if an employee doesn't need to take our insurance, perhaps they have a spouse or a parent that are under 26, then that plan still exists. They would see this cash and lieu as a benefit because they're not taking the health insurance benefit. So if.
We would only offer it if we save money.
I'm sorry. Say your question, Anne.
We would only offer it if we can save money. That's, that should be the point of offering a cash and lieu is so the district can save money and provide the health insurance. That that's the goal is to give a health insurance plan if employees want.
Right. But you have, and I don't say we have to keep it forever, but right now, we have employees who are here, who are taking it as a benefit. So the same way, we have employees who are paying a lot of attention to what we're doing with our insurance decisions and what those things are going to be. We have employees who are going to look and see, are we still going to have that cash and lieu? And that might influence their decision. Maybe if we take away cash and lieu or reduce it to a certain amount, they would decide to be on our insurance. Or, you know, I mean, there's a lot of pieces. What I'm saying is that they are separate conversations, but they are still tied together. And so we can't make them, they're not individual silos. They're all going to kind of go together.
This raises a question for me of the idea that we have a goal of achieving some degree of overall cost savings at the end of our discussion here. And the idea that it's probably going to have to be sort of shared across pools. So I think that's another reason that I would like to see a little bit of the cost and lieu decrease so that the pain is shared across, you know, pools. Do you have a sense of how much savings you would, you would recommend we try to achieve by adjusting the health plan versus other areas of the budget corollary? Why are we even looking at the proposals that increase our costs?
So the idea is to provide you a wide range of options. So the idea is to provide you a wide range of options for you to consider. It's possible that the six of you sitting here do not want to change your health plan whatsoever. So I'm putting it out there. It's going to cost us an extra seven hundred thirty thousand or whatever it is to run that, if that's what we want to do. And if that question comes to me, how are we going to solve that? The answer is, I don't know.
Right.
So it's out there. But that idea of why have some that are going to cost money is because ultimately, this is the health plan that you're providing for its employee, all of its employees. So giving you that full range of options to say, this is what we want to do. And then we figure it out from there. Again, I don't have that answer today. If you ask me, where does that extra seven hundred thousand come from? And we would work to find it. I don't know if we can, truthfully, but.
Do you have an answer for my question?
Yeah. I, I mean, ultimately, I think at the minimum, if we could get halfway there would be great.
Like six hundred dollars?
But truthfully, if that's not palatable for the school board, like, we'll take savings what we can and we work to figure out the rest.
What about the idea that was raised during community comment about pooling with other districts?
Yep. So that has been, I will say that has been attempted, not necessarily at Franklin, but at many districts in many different communities. And pooling your health plan together typically does not work very well. Pooling stop loss insurance, that's gaining some traction. And you're starting, you, you see public, they're cooperatives, is that what they're called? Captives, thank you. You see public captives for large groups joining with other large groups for stop loss. And we're starting to see some public school captives or groups discussing it. So for instance, I think I mentioned back in January that we met with Greendale and Elm Brook, and we're starting these kind of health conversations. And we have a meeting next week, Wednesday, in this room in the morning with healthcare providers. So the idea of pooling stop loss has been discussed between us. We haven't managed to like fully get around that as districts are trying to. So that idea has been kicked around, but health plans typically do not because you're joining on, like, we'd have to merge with somebody else and they'd either have to accept our health plan or we'd have to accept theirs, or we'd have to totally adjust in the middle. From a timing standpoint, like to actually get that done in a sixty six oh three oh one agreement in place, like that's not happening by July one. So like, just timing wise, to cost that all out, to come to some sort of agreement that both or multiple districts could take to the school board and have approved, like that's just not going to happen.
I also think we have to think about more than just one year. We have to have a path here. Where are we coming in this every year in this ten options? There's got to be some kind of goal in mind. This just doesn't seem, when I look at your slide number six, which is how people don't, aren't using the plan because they're healthy. And how do you explain the fact that we have a twenty percent increase in our costs? That doesn't seem to, what am I missing there?
Sorry, I'm getting to it. We have a significant amount of people on that plan one, and that is a very expensive plan to run. Sorry, this is going to kick off if we don't stay on the call.
It's a very expensive plan to run, or it was a very expensive plan to run last year.
It's a very expensive plan to run in general, whether people are using it or not, to hold those benefits where they are. So.
Using or not, but we're self-insured. So we only pay for the costs that we have.
So we're still paying that deductible or that premium in. And we have more high-cost claimants this year. And we're. Correct. But that stop loss insurance next year is going up at a minimum thirty six percent. So our best offer was thirty six percent. So at minimum, that's going up to keep that same particular health plan. So that's taking an approximate million dollar spend and moving it to one point three six million, just to run that alone.
So if I may, just to answer that question more specifically, one percent of your enrolled population is driving twenty five percent of your healthcare spend. So yes, eighty nine percent of the people aren't using a lot of it. So yes, 89% of the people aren't using a lot of it, but 1% are using a lot of it. And that adds up very quickly and that impacts stop loss. And that's a big reason why Andy's bringing forward the Samaritan Fund program as a solution. High cost claims continue to get very, very costly. Yes.
Is it fair to say that options one through four, which are basically continuing the hybrid model that we have from last year are not sustainable?
I don't know that that's fair. I think there's a movement that needs to happen, not at Franklin, I think across our country. There needs to be a different focus on health in general, and I think that's kind of dovetailing into the next part of the conversation with the clinic. Chronic conditions are plaguing the plan. They're plaguing every plan across the country. So it doesn't matter what insurance option you put forward when you've got 1.6 million dollar claimants hitting a plan.
Okay. So nothing is sustainable because we live in where we live.
Well, uh, keeping our health plan exactly as it is is sustainable for the district if you shift the cost to the employees. But like, I'll just quickly scan through plan one or option one, two, three, and four, or really two, three, and four, right? We're seeing some large jumps here. Okay. So cascade option four to next year and we keep it at 24, 25 amounts. And you add another six or seven or $8,000 for an employee standpoint to rent a, but that's where it starts to become unsustainable. But from the district standpoint, if you cap whatever you're providing towards health, that's sustainable from the district. But are we going to keep employees? Like I would find it hard to believe that we're going to keep employees with a $12,000 employer or employee premium share.
I have a lot of questions though. So five, five through seven seem to be going a little bit more in on Garner. And I know my hesitation about Garner last year was just that it was sort of an unproven product to me. Can you give me any more information other than that one slide in TL about how that product has performed for us, anecdotal or otherwise?
Do you have that information?
I don't, I don't have it with me, but I can follow up with you on how it works. But they are validating that individuals that are engaging in the program are seeing on average lower costs than those that aren't.
Any data on health outcomes?
I can ask them for that.
Satisfaction, like that kind of stuff?
Yeah, I can ask for that as a follow-up.
Thank you.
And that will be district specific?
Yes.
So you, you do have the clinic in here, but you don't have any impact on the cost side. No savings are incorporated.
Correct. We anticipate long-term, and we'll talk about this with the clinic, but we anticipate long-term savings with it. We have not built that into the projection for the main reason the board has not approved that. So like I, I'm budgeting for it. So you can see what the budget impact is with it, but we haven't approved it. Second, it will still be a slow start. So if we open January 1st, well, we, we plan to see those projections that we'll show you in the next slide set. The first six months of that are the last six months of our budget year. So even if we kill it, we're still not going to drastically impact our first or our last six months of health for the, for the year.
You know where we're going. There's some, it's not 10%, 10%, 10%.
Yeah. Uh, my target is 2% long-term.
This year?
No. Can we long-term keep healthcare at a 2% increase year over year?
So then we plan to get past this, huh? Andy says to protect. So, um, and it seems to me the only one that is sustainable would be, it's got to be higher deductibles. Now you can, like option seven is the best plan on here from the district standpoint. 570,000 dollar savings eliminates plan one, but the, the cost increases to employee, our premium are affordable. $55, net annual, yeah, or 125. And if we know 85% or 90% of people don't, they're not, we're going to be spending more than a thousand. And Garner will reimburse them. If that's potentially, they can do that.
I'll put the plan design up here.
More information on sort of our experience with Garner because I agree with you, Linda.
And maybe we don't eliminate one and make everybody go to two, or we have to get employees to choose the higher deductibles. They're just, they could get there on their own or be eliminated and you're going to be there. Those are, that's what I see as our path forward. We can't just be looking at this year to year. We have to know where we're going. Cause we've got two years of 10% increases. You're killing us.
Yeah. I, what I would add, and I spoke to the better place to work committee about this. So plan two obviously has the dire, the higher deductible, right? 5,000, 10,000. So from an individual standpoint, looking at that deductible can be scary. So when you think about healthcare, healthcare is very personal. So it's personal to all of us. It's personal to everybody out there. And everybody's going to look at it a little bit differently directly how they relate to their family. Right? So, but when we look at numbers as a district, that one slide about the 89.9%, the 97.7%. What I explained to Better Place to Work is Laura and I worked with Brown and Brown to look at that because that, the district operates on the whole, not on each individual. I, we know people that are on the high deductible or have hit the stop loss. Like we know who those are because they come through and need FMA typically. So you know who they are. Not necessarily what's happened to them, but you know that there's something going on. So I would guess everybody in here can say they've known somebody who's had one of those catastrophic illnesses and catastrophic diagnoses, right? But that, again, that slide of 89.9% and 97.7%, so the vast majority of people aren't that individual. And again, healthcare is very personal to me. It's very personal to all of you. It's very personal to everybody out there. But in aggregate, this is what the data tells you if you look at it as a whole. And so when we approach plan design, not necessarily all of these options, but when we approach plan design, it's looking at it as the whole and taking out all of the specific individuals that could potentially be in that, knowing anybody can be in it at any time. But if we look at it individually, it's really hard to make decisions. That's where Laura and I have to look at the aggregator, work with Brown and Brown to say, what is the actual data in aggregate say about health plans and this and X, Y, and Z in each of those particular components? So it's one of the things that makes talking healthcare very hard is we all, some of us have been them or some of us know somebody or it's a family member or it's someone we work closely with. That makes it really hard to talk about. But again, if you focus on the, the data of the whole group, that's where those decisions can be made. Not necessarily palatable, but can be made.
So, and to maybe help also move them to plan two and to help with any cost, have we thought about HSA account? Split the savings with employee, start that account for them so they can save that money pre-tax?
We have, um, but unfortunately we cannot pair that with Garner. So it's, we were talking about the two, so, um, actually had sent the health plan design to Chris. But again, it eliminates Garner. So it's weighing this option versus that option. There, there's pluses and minuses to both.
It actually eliminates all the copay options. So it would be HSAs require members to need a deductible before any health insurance steps in. So the minimum deductible for HSAs is about $1,600 for single coverage. That's an IRS regulation.
And they would count the Garner reimbursement as potentially having that via?
The Garner reimbursement can come in afterwards, but that first member responsibility is a requirement.
So this is all predicated on everybody agreeing to Garner is plan number two?
I'm not, what do you mean by that, Mary?
Well, because Garner was kind of a tough sell, you know, but it sounds like maybe it's working out, but this would mean everybody just has to sign on to Garner?
Nope. You don't, you don't have to sign on to Garner, but your deductible is five, in plan two as it currently exists is 5,000, 10,000. If you choose not to sign on or not to find a Garner physician, then you're taking that whole 5,000, 10,000 dollar risk out. If you choose to, the first 4,000 or first 8,000 of your health plan is reimbursed along, you have to follow the Garner path the entire way. But presumably for the vast majority of people who are doing a primary care visit, maybe a single specialist visit. Long as it's with Garner, they're under that 1,000, 2,000 kind of range. So probably going to be like fully funded back with Garner.
Would it be possible for us to monkey around in the Garner app? I just want to see what it's like.
Um, I don't think we can get you an account because we have to upload from it. If you want to play around in my app, you can do that.
Okay. Get an appointment on the calendar.
There, I just want to say there's also Garner session for PB day on April 21st. They're joining virtually to walk people through the app if that is more palatable.
What time?
Nine, between there's nine 30 and 11 30. So two sessions. That was a request and they can join virtually and like answer questions.
Option nine and 10, does anybody have any interest in exploring those further? The, the Centivo option or the, that, that was immediately dismissed last year.
No, I, I would actually say we could probably eliminate anything that's going to cost more, right?
Great. And I, I agree with you.
I mean, it's a lot, I'm happy to have 10 options, but it's a lot to look at. And if we're trying to reduce, it seems to me like we're not going to all of a sudden be like, well, we want to reduce, but let's look at option one that costs us 700,000. Be like, I think personally I would take those four off the table.
You mean one through four and nine and 10?
One and two.
One and two, nine and 10 that increase our total.
I concur.
I agree with that.
Okay.
So focusing on three through eight, is there, other than a couple of the things that, um, Mandy's written down, is there any, like, is there a plan you'd like to see but adjusted? A plan design change, see it with a different plan design? So they're, they're all kind of in front of you. I gave you those kind of one-page ideas for them. But for instance, like if moving to the single health plan is something that people want to do, and the only reason I'm using this one is because it's nice and easy to talk about one health plan versus two. Would you want to see this at a different deductible rate or a different Garner reimbursement rate?
I'd just like to see it compared to a different, to a different deductible rate.
Do you have an idea of what you'd like to see that at? The, modeling a health plan and inside of ours isn't really hard. I don't have the software to do it here. That's done by Brown and Brown, but like for them.
Is it true to say that the Garner reimbursement rate would always trail behind by about a thousand dollars?
It is, but if, if you wanted to see it equal, we could do that.
We, it's truly super catered to what you're wanting to see. So if we wanted to follow that logic, we could do like a 3,000, 6,000. I'm just kind of trying to find a place in between plan one and two and then do a Garner reimbursement. If we wanted to follow that logic, do like a 2,000, 4,000. So the net deductible is 1,000, 2,000.
Sure.
Start there.
Okay.
Okay.
You're taking these notes?
Yep.
Okay.
I guess how do people feel about capping the, the two districts contribution and shifting to employee? I, I'm not really a favor of doing that kind of capping it. I don't see that as sustainable or.
No.
There's no basis. I don't see a basis other than.
Other than having a number with which to monkey, right? Not to, not to make light of it, but a number.
Yeah, 100%.
A variable for us to adjust.
You want to keep it clean in terms of, I guess, 50% for plan one, 5% for plan two. I don't know.
Was there anything that you were, in addition to this very extensive menu, that you were like, why aren't they considering fill in the blank?
No, I think you guys have obviously a lot of options presented. I'm eager for you to hear about the clinic piece. I think that's a big part of the equation to Linda, your comment earlier about a multi-year strategy. I think a clinic strategy is fundamentally important as I referenced the need for individuals to probably have a different way to access care than they have today.
I, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Well, you know, Andy, you've mentioned your goal is 2% going forward. So the only tool you're missing is the clinic to make that happen?
I, I think it's a large component of it. I, I talked about this last year. It, it's where we're accessing healthcare is the largest component in our healthcare costs. And again, Freiter does things really well. Aurora does different things really well. Ascension does some things really well. I have no idea what it's going to cost to any one of those. Like I, I have no idea. So Brown and Brown can help us understand where cost is going to be efficient. Garner has brought in that component of where the individual provider, right? This, every, every system is good and bad, like every, like everything else, every system's got really high quality people. Every system's got lower quality people. So Garner's brought in that, what is the actual, actual provider, not the system? I think component that is really helpful. So how do we, again, how do we get people to, where's, where does cost meet? The best care place? Cause it's going to be different. That the cost point for great care is different at Freiter than it is at Aurora, than it is at Ascension. I don't know which one's higher. And it's different for everything that you're going to do. So that's the key component is you don't know. Everything else we do, we can go shop for, right? Mike Hacker mentioned RFP process for roofs, right? Well, we, an individual's not doing an RFP process for a knee surgery and waiting to do that. Or God forbid you have like a heart attack, like you're not RFPing on your way to the hospital in an ambulance. So we, we just don't know where those are. So I, steerage, and that's where Brown and Brown comes in. That's where the clinic is. One of those components is how do we get people to high quality care? That's affordable. But to me, that's the largest piece because we just don't know. We, we, as an individual, I just don't know where it is.
Well, healthcare costs are. And healthcare costs are just going to keep increasing wherever you're getting care.
They do, for, for sure.
I have a question and maybe, maybe it's not answerable, maybe it is, but I, I heard a lot that we had a particularly rough year in terms of a lot of people having catastrophic, I'm, I'm not going to say catastrophic.
Yeah, high cost.
High cost claims. What, if this had been last year's, last year's numbers, what would the difference have been? Do we, do, I mean?
Yeah, I can, I can give you a rough answer on that. So we typically hover around seven to eight high cost claimants. This year we happen to be at 12. So we're off, we're not drastically off. So we're probably looking at probably on average, maybe 50 to 60,000 of those four individuals. So probably 240 to 250-ish thousand dollars out of pocket that we're paying. We're going to pay some additional stop loss premium next year because we have some more people approaching, either hitting it or approaching it, right? But in aggregate, it's not like it's a huge boom if we had a regular year of seven to eight. But we would see, I, as a percentage, instead of that 115.8% that we saw on the one slide, maybe it's 114.8 or 113.8. It's not like, it's not major in terms of an eight, nine million dollar spend.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you have a sense, and you've been in the Better Place to Work meetings, we have not, do you have a sense from staff? Is there more of an appetite to change deductibles, more of an appetite to change premiums, more of an appetite to just stay the same regardless of anything? Like what, you know, what, is there, is there a, like a dead, like, oh my gosh, you know, the worst thing in the world would be to increase my deductible versus, you know what I mean? I'm just trying to get a sense of like, is, oh, because we still have, you know, all these plans. Is there something that is just a, a breaking point or is it just so individual to each person that it's impossible?
I, I would say from like deductible versus premium, I wouldn't be able to say, I don't know if you've gotten something from that, Laura. I think the, the biggest thing we.
Like what are you hearing from?
The biggest thing we got from Better Place to Work is an understanding of where our health plan is and that it's not sustainable in its current form. I think that was the, that's at least the biggest thing I've gotten from the group, not necessarily about our plan design or if they favor one, a this change versus this change versus this change. I think it's really just an understanding that we've gotten to, that something has to, something has to change to keep it sustainable.
Which would be what?
Something.
Any, any of these options, something.
Not, not where it currently is.
Which is of course.
With option, option one is where it currently sits, right? If we, if you were to choose option one, that would be staying current with what it is. Still increasing premium by 21, yeah, right. It adds a lot to the district. It increases premiums by 21%. So that would be staying exactly where it is. I, I think they understand Better Place to Work that that, like really staying there isn't an option if we want to maintain our benefit long-term. if we want to maintain our benefit long-term.
All right, does anybody have further questions? Or clarifications? Or the next question is, if not, do you, Andy and Annalee have enough to pare down from?
Yeah, I'll try to put it stops, it's eliminate one and two, nine and ten. So eliminate those right off the bat, so now we're between three and eight. It's coming back with a single plan option at three thousand, six thousand to see what that looks like. It's coming back with a potential drop in cash and lieu and to see if we can find where that meets. I don't know if we're going to be able to, but we can get some estimates if we drop it down this much or if we drop it down this much, what that might actually do to the plan. I think outside of Plan One, people didn't want to see anything else. So it's still kind of keeping that three to eight with a couple of adjustments, as I mentioned, with option seven and cash and lieu, and then kind of evaluating three through eight, seeing what that one change potentially does. Does that sound about right?
Yes, and if we have more things, we'll, we'll let you know when you can respond.
Yeah, if you have other thoughts, if we can have them probably by next week Wednesday, we can cost those. I don't know if we'll, if it comes late Wednesday, I don't know if I'll have a costing by Friday for the board report, we'll have a board report for you and I can update those numbers via email, so you have it ahead of time. I don't know if it would be in the specific board report, depending on how late we get them.
And we're not looking at the reduced salary wage increase, I'm out.
But I'll be honest with you, I am not making a recommendation at all, so you should ask the six board members that are sitting here whether that's what you're looking at or not. That, again, those are just things that were brought forth, if people did not want a health option, this is another way that budget could be reduced, same cash and lieu is again, one of those options.
Can I ask for consultants, what, what other, what have you been seeing with your other hundred districts? Why not, you don't have a hundred districts, but what kind of increases are they seeing with that? We ours was twenty-one percent, what are you seeing around our area?
We're seeing the high singles, low teens, this one is a high one.
We are really over.
This year you are.
And are costing increases, is that, is actuary determined, or is it? So I'm wondering how much those one-time kind of this is a bad year for that rolls into that, or is that?
So if we were to say it, I mean, there, it's kind of an every five year, we see this happen with employers where there's bad swings, kind of in the downswing, we'll call it. I'm not an actuary, so I can't say what exactly that math is or what's based, what that's based on. But it's certainly cyclical. What's driving it systemically, I don't know. I mean, I've got other employers that are in your shoes right now as well. And then I've got employers that are coming out of it and they're having a good year right now. So I can, I, I know what the claims are that are driving it, but what's caused them to be so high or what caused it to get to this point is probably a culmination of multiple things.
Do you see of the options that we have, thinking about how Linda said, you know, it seems like every year we're coming back to this, and knowing as healthcare is very personal, it's very hard to have a healthcare change. I think we've all been through that, you know, I totally have, you know, it's frustrating and stressful to have a healthcare change. Of these different options, do you see any that would be more sustainable long-term? Especially thinking about potentially having a health clinic as well as a piece of that. But are any of these designed in such a way that the increases might not be so much? Or they might have more longevity? Or do you just see this as buckle in every year, we're going to have the same conversation?
That's a good question. So given, so the first thing is your population itself is going to be volatile. You just, you're, you're a large district, but from law of large numbers, you're not large enough to create, you're going to have peaks and valleys. I think there's, there's a simplicity to a single plan design that creates maybe more buy-in from a population. So I do like that idea, but I also recognize that having dual plans is a part of a recruitment strategy. So I, it's a very sensitive balance of all of these. I think a clinic strategy will support just overall population health that I think, and I keep saying it, is probably systemically going to be the best fight that any employer would have to start to bend that trend. Because we're all against headwinds of just year, like I think you said, year-over-year healthcare just gets more expensive. So we're up against eight to nine percent increases year-over-year without touching anything. So if, if that's what we know to be true, the next thing we have to do is start to figure out how to make our people healthier. And the way to do that is to give them access to care like they haven't had before. And so I think it's not necessarily a plan design, a premium structure, a salary adjustment, a cash and lieu. It's, it's truly giving people the tools to make better healthcare decisions.
And Laura, just because this just triggered, is there something that you see when you're doing interviews for new staff? Like that we offer that other districts don't, or you know what I mean? Is there been, like, do you see, as you just mentioned, like that a two-plan is more attractive to staff? Or a single plan, or you know, are those decisions just, again, all part of that whole benefits package? And it's hard to pull out one thing or another?
It's hard to pull out one thing or another, I wouldn't say I have, you know, the first question that candidates are asking me is do you have one or two health plan options and what do those look like? Some, some ask for that upfront, but for the most part, we put it as a part of the total compensation package because it's everything, right? It's how many personal days you have the option to select, and it's how many sick days do you get? How many of those can you bank long-term? You know, what are your options for PD? So obviously, people always have a lot of questions about health insurance, but I don't think, if we only had one plan and I had the opportunity to explain it, it's hard to say whether or not it would be a detriment or less confusing, to be honest with you, for some staff members because they, you know, have a lot of questions. I often get the question is which plan is better? Well, I can't answer that because I'm not a part of your family, I can only tell you what the differences are. It's hard to predict because we've never, I've never been able to compare one plan to two plans in terms of a model.
Andy, can you review the slide that just said how many of our neighboring districts have a one-plan versus two-plans situation?
Yep, thirteen are a single plan, five, us being one of them, have multi-plan.
So most or more are a single plan.
Can we see those that have an outside clinic, what's been their, their history of health insurance increases over the last five years?
Are they sharing it with you?
For the, I can, I can share what we know in our book, we're not all of those, we don't, we don't support all of those eighteen compared districts, but we can pull what we know to be true. I know Megan and her team have data, I mean, how we validate it oftentimes is clinic users versus non-clinic users and what they come to as a paid patient per year, paid member per year, and look at what that is. And we'll call it a cohort group, so it's really the people that have stuck with the plan year-over-year, so you can see that evolution.
I guess I'm also curious about the narrow network, I mean, I'm just curious about that. I don't see this too appealing based on this, but I'm kind of wondering how much that impacts year-over-year planning.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking to your peers.
Okay, what was your question? They also have the, yeah, the six have narrow network or?
Oh, yes.
But the, I think it's been under cost increases also.
Sure, I can, I can pull that anecdotal, anecdotally. That's a cost play, so that really comes down to what those networks are reimbursing, those provider systems. So we're using Nexus, they're, you know, they've got a really good deal with Aurora. Where you see Centivo, they've got a really good deal with Ascension. So they've negotiated ways to reimburse those provider systems, it's a volume play. Come to this network, we'll make sure that you've got more volume coming to you as a provider. So is, is it going to create savings? Yes, and year one it will, but that just creates your new, that's not your new starting place. You're still going to have the claims happening, it's just now they're happening at Aurora more or at Ascension more. And those networks have just negotiated deeper.
Just reset.
Correct.
I see it as more of a year-one strategy, like a one-year, and then all it's redoing is just setting the baseline. And now you just go from that new baseline.
You stay down there for that year one, but then now you're still going to have sick patients. Right. The thing with Centivo, and I argue it's still kind of that philosophy around the clinic model, is Centivo, if you remember, there was that Wisconsin one, Wisconsin two, one of them had a richer plan design. What that's trying to drive, if you look at PCP visits, that's primary care visits, they are trying to make it at zero deductible, they're trying to reduce any financial barrier for people going to primary care, which is that same philosophy of let's just get people in to start conversations with their providers to get on the right track for their health. So they do have a very, a strong value prop in that regard. But then next to that, it's that network play, like I said, they've, they've worked out a better deal with Ascension.
But if we have a clinic that engages?
That, I was just going to say, then our clinic design would be if people are coming to our clinic to get in for that initial?
Exactly.
Point, that's the same as having a zero.
Correct, you would want to remove financial barriers with your clinic.
No, we've done health assessments for what, many, many years, right? So do we, are we healthy, getting healthier, what have we, what have we seen over time?
Our health assessment is essentially designed as if you don't do it, you'll pay more premium. Like, it's not really designed for population health. Laura and I have some ideas around how we could utilize the clinic and a health risk assessment to essentially work towards making our population healthier. A simple one is simply, your health risk assessment has to be done at the health clinic and you're going to meet with the clinician as part of it. Like simply that introduction, that thirty-minute conversation of here's all the things that are happening, here's what we saw from your health risk assessment. That's kind of one, just a very easy initial thought. Other districts will say you have a health risk assessment and we're measuring six things, cholesterol, blood pressure, things like that. However many fall into the red zone, that's how many times you have to go to the clinic during the course of the year. So other districts do that. So there are multiple strategies around there. Again, some of that is how much do you want to take on? Or do you want, do you want it to feel forced, or do you want it to feel organic? And there's a, there's a sweet spot for that, like anything, there's a sweet spot for that, too. I don't essentially know what that is. But ultimately, a clinic, and we'll talk about this a little more in the next slide, that's grassroots. Like, we're going to promote it, we're going to do all of those things. More people are going to go if they know somebody has a positive experience and has talked about it that they're friends with or colleagues with or close with at work. I mean, that's just the nature of how it's going to work.
Seems like we're getting into clinics, so maybe we can, maybe we can move on to, we can move on to that.
Can I just recap what I've got for, for follow-ups really quick? So I'm going to be looking at the different estimates of the reduced cash and lieu. I think we were going to do the eight eighty as the first pass. I've already sent the request over to Garner for the additional data. We're going to look at that option seven, which will probably now be like a new option number. But option seven, changing that single plan to a three thousand, six thousand deductible with a back, a backfill of Garner at two thousand, four thousand, and then getting the clinic utilize your data that lasts request. So we'll get those in motion.
Thank you.
Okay, next, next one, this, okay, this one is actually fun. So District Health Clinic, so I'll walk you through a little bit of the process. First of all, we worked with Brown and Brown, and I'll introduce Megan Myers, Megan was part of our team. Her and her partner Katie were spearheading this clinic idea. We received some feedback as it was discussed at Better Place to Work prior to us even engaging with any vendors about what they would like to see in the clinic or questions they had, so that we could work to answer those. Our interview team included Anna Lee, Laura, Megan Ludig, Rebecca's here today, Rebecca Ujikowski. I know I said that wrong. Okay. Brown and Brown and myself, so a good cohort. We actually did this reverse RFP process, which was kind of cool. I haven't ever done it before, but essentially Megan and Katie worked together to develop a list of things they wanted vendors to come talk about with us and to know about us. So we actually met with vendors before we even received a proposal. So we met with four vendors that day. Following, meeting those four vendors, all of the people that you saw listed in bullet point three had a conversation. We ultimately eliminated one right off the bat. Their smallest clinic was for a twenty-five thousand group. A group of individuals that they had, which we were stepping down into around a thousand. Plus our staff who aren't on a health plan, so maybe thirteen hundred. We didn't feel totally confident that that twenty-five thousand model was going to scale down. So we said no, and we accepted proposals from three of those vendors. What you'll see tonight, though, is really only two vendors being brought forth. The third vendor, while we did like them, we would be the only one in the region, and a lot of their model was designed around sharing your clinic with other clinics in the area. So we weren't really going to be able to utilize that particular feature, although you would be paying for that feature, as most of those were around the Green Bay area. Put them really at a cost disadvantage, a model disadvantage that seven, eight years from now, would we look at that as they start merging across the state? Probably a little bit more, but today, it just didn't seem like the right fit for us. Ultimately, you're going to see a cost comparison with proactive MD and quad med. Recommended staffing level, you can see implementation costs, medical equipment, year-one fixed cost staff, all of that. I do want to talk about the recommended staff level before I talk about the fixed cost. So both of them, nurse practitioner, you could fit that with a physician's assistant, it'll be the same. You'll see an LPN. The difference here, proactive is wants a patient advocate, and I'll explain that in just a moment. Quad med, a medical assistant. So I'll be honest with you, and I'm only going to speak for myself on this one. When they first started talking about this patient advocate, I was like, we do not need a patient advocate. Over the course of the next hour in meeting with them, I was like, oh my gosh, if we don't have a patient advocate, like we are not going to be knowing what to do. So the patient advocate is really designed around two things. One, it's going to take a look at that health risk assessment data, Linda, that you mentioned before, and it's going to say, these individuals really need to be seen by the clinician. And it's going to start working towards edging those people to come see the clinician or to go see a primary care physician. So that's the first step of that patient advocate. The second one is I go to the clinic and nurse practitioner says, you're going to go need to see a specialist for X, Y, and Z. Patient advocate is on it, working with the Garner app, working with getting you in to see what that next step is. And the, the people at proactive MD told this wonderful story about the patient advocate at multiple clinics driving actually to a physician's office who has said, no, they won't see them and waiting until they can get an appointment at the physician's office for like something catastrophic. So by the end of it, I was like, we have to have a patient advocate. It seems like it's like, this is going to be something that helps drive. And we'll talk a little bit later about what their estimates will tell you the patient advocate will drive. You will see a higher year-one fixed cost with proactive MD of about eighty thousand dollars. You will however, also see a lower annual cost increase, so it is only three percent to four percent. It is slightly lower, over fifteen, twenty years, we might make up that initial eighty thousand dollars. But off the bat, we're looking at eighty thousand more dollars to go with proactive MD. There are essentially pass-through costs that will come with both providers. A pass-through cost is simply this, it costs them six dollars for a medication, they're going to bill us six dollars for that medication. It costs them six cents for a tongue depressor, they're going to bill us six cents for that tongue depressor. Now they do that in aggregate on a monthly basis. You'll see that proactive MD is estimating seventy thousand, two hundred seventy-two dollars in pass-through costs in year one. Quad med, twenty-nine thousand, six hundred fifty-two. I think this is one of the key components about proactive MD that I do really like. They're basing their estimate off of a hundred-plus school district clients that they have. So they're taking a look at actual school districts and what utilization is like, pairing that out to our about twelve hundred people that will be accessible to our clinic and telling us it's going to cost seventy thousand, two hundred dollars. Quad med is taking their fifty-five total clients, who may or may not be school districts, and saying it's going to be about twenty-nine thousand, six hundred fifty-two dollars. I will tell you, quad med works primarily in the manufacturing workspace, so the clinic needs are going to be different than what we're going to need. Not necessarily that that's good or bad, but their estimates are going to be based off of a little different model than we're going to have. This break-even analysis is really where the rubber meets the road when we start comparing proactive MD to quad med. So the top graph is proactive MD, the lower graph or the lower portion is quad med. The two things that we're going to look at are yearly net savings. So that's going to be actual cost versus estimated health savings. And then we're going to look at that estimated cumulative health savings, and that's really where I want us to focus, is that estimated cumulative health savings. Those are really estimated cost diversion because we're seeing, or that person or individuals are being seen in the clinic and having, one, that clinic cost versus seeing a physician outside. Two, it's cost diversion because, one, we might be managing things better, so high blood pressure. As Mandy mentioned, those chronic conditions, are we managing those chronic conditions better? Or are we getting them into Garner, into the right app with that patient advocate? Or is that patient advocate getting things done faster? So typically? So typically in health, the sooner we catch things right, the less chance it is of being catastrophic and we typically can solve it faster, better, and have a much better outcome for the employee. By year three, you'll see with proactive MD that not only do we have an overall savings, we have an estimated $3 million of health savings by year three, and that cascades to year five to about $6.5 million. And again, that's cost diversion or actual savings. So there's a little bit difference here. We will see actual savings by a person seeing the physician or nurse practitioner at the clinic then versus going to their primary care. Quad Med, we're going to meet that full cumulative savings in year four. And by year five, we'll only see a cost diversion cost savings of 4.4 million. So $2.1 million difference between proactive and Quad Med. One thing before your question, just so I can finish this slide. You'll see the utilization estimation is different for each group. Proactive MD starts at 35 and increases by 10% by a year, by year five. Quad Med starts at 20 and gets up about 30 more percent by year five. That is directly tied to what they're seeing with the patient advocate and the patient advocate driving people to the clinic, finding those next steps should a person need that next step of care outside of that primary care model. And again, that is coming from their book of business based on the 100 plus school districts that they're working with. So those, again, savings are tied directly to that patient advocate, which again was taking back to that, like I started off going, no way, we do not need this to, oh my gosh, like this is a, it seems essential component to the clinic model.
And that's based on their, and that's based on the 100 school districts they.
That they're working with and what they're seeing. Yep.
That's an average roughly.
Local districts or nationwide?
So they're nationwide. They do have a clinic in Waukesha, so we would be their second in Wisconsin. But again, their model's not built on the shared piece, so I, I, less of a concern about that. I will tell you with both models is really if the clinician is sick, what do we do? Quad Med had, they're more regional, so there's a better chance we're filling that today. But proactive MD gave us pretty good assurance, I won't say it's 100%, but a pretty good assurance that they'll still have, they'll have a pool of individuals that could fill in on a daily basis if we needed. Nurse practitioner gets sick and just not here today. Neither one will tell you it's 100%, but I feel confident with both that we would be able to fill it as much as possible if that happens. Both of the vendors are willing to put part of their normal fees at risk. Proactive MD is up to 10%, Quad Med is at 7%. And those are really based off of ROI. So Linda had sent a question earlier in the week, so they're going to set a baseline through the course of the first quarter about where our population's health at a bunch of different metrics. And those ROI start building off of what is that initial baseline that they're going to understand about us. That's going to go with experience performance as well. So everybody that goes is going to have the opportunity to rate, how was this, on a series of questions. Chronic condition engagement, chronic condition management. So both of them are going to work essentially off of those four things. They're going to be at different levels, but roughly the same from how they're going to bend, uh, uh, view them. Some additional considerations. Proactive MD talks about employee, their employees. So we're thinking nurse practitioner, their patient advocate, their LPN. Part of their raise is going to be tied to our population health improvement. That's going to be set again in that first quarter off of that baseline and how do we drive improved health? Marketing proactive MD focuses a lot on people that patient advocates job is out there marketing this. So meeting with staff in their building or you mentioned gear up sessions, so coming to gear up sessions and doing things along with that. Quad Med spends, most of their marketing is on print material, so things we could email out. Both have experience with Garner and direct contract, I'm sorry, direct contracts. Proactive MD does have experience with Garner and navigating that. So taking an employee who needs to see a specialist, taking them right on their phone, going right into the app. Let's find the specialist, let's get you that appointment. Now we're going to do that whole next step with it and get you that appointment right now as well. Experience with education, as we mentioned, proactive MD has 100 plus K-12 clients throughout the country. Virtual, proactive MD does have a virtual option for patient use. And I will tell you that your first meeting with proactive MD is going to be onsite. As an employee, as a dependent, you're going to go meet with the clinician. If you have some of those more chronic issues, at that point, can they do a virtual option for you and meet you on your computer at home, whatever? Yep, that's going to be an option. But your first visit's going to be onsite, that clinician's going to want to meet you, understand. We talk about medication dispensing, proactive MD has a stronger platform for dispensing medications. They have existing contracts to help manage costs. Quad Med was a little bit adverse to that at first. They're not as robust in their having an onsite dispensary. So it's a dispensary, not a pharmacy, so that's important to note. Medications come prepackaged, they're non-narcotics, so antibiotics, high blood pressure, high cholesterol, but it comes prepackaged, so you're 30, you know, your month prescription of high blood pressure medication is going to come in a pill already prepackaged with 30 pills in it, they're not counting out 30. So dispensary. But Quad Meds is not as robust, their contracts are not as robust, proactive MD wide-ranging. I will add one more component that we did add up here. Proactive MD really is looking to invest in themselves. So while this is not up and running, they have purchased it, they bought their own labs. So they're sending labs to their own lab company because they want to control the time it takes to get the results back and not be at the, uh, back and call of somebody else. So I was like. Well, they said 24 hours. I don't know if it's local or where it's located, but they said.
If I have my blood drawn, they're sending it.
They said they could have results in 24 hours. I, I have no idea where that is and I'll say, I'll take your 24 hours that what you're telling us is going to happen. So ultimately, we're bringing a recommendation for, for proactive MD. Again, a higher initial cost, we understand that long-term, when we think about where do we want healthcare in the long-term, kind of plateauing long-term, we think proactive MD will have a better strategy to do that. We felt much better about them as a group. I would say less robotic and more really patient focused is what I got. So probably everybody's had a physician that's been very patient focused and one that's very not patient focused, equally good, they're just different ways to approach. Proactive MD seems to be a little bit more of that hand-holding patient focus.
They have more of an education background too, right? A lot of their clients that you saw on the slide earlier are education-based, so they had a really clear understanding to, you know, what is the work they look like for the majority of our staff, what are some of the early hours we'd want in clinic or later hours if people, staff are trying to get here before work or after. And just a general understanding of like time in the office compared to getting back to if you have a classroom or students that you're returning to. So I think that was one piece that stood out when you talk about it being like a better feel. It was like, there's a true understanding of what it looks like to serve educators and people working in an education system and having that experience and that background, right? 100 clinics that are running out of education, they have people leaving on. And they're hearing very professional, very invested in wanting to make sure that they are here to serve our staff. So that advocate that Andy's talked quite a bit about, I think grew out of all of us through learning more about it. And I think it puts that layer between, right? Healthcare is so personal, we don't want to know what's going on with people individually, right? That's not our no space, but having that individual person that can go into buildings and talk at staff meetings, I can advocate for what's going on in the clinic, that can be seeing trends and maybe what's going on specific to our employer to offer even wellness aspects and things like that. That's where proactive really came through in their practices and they're like, they are going to get you connected with somebody right away. So if you need to see a specialist or whoever that is, Andy mentioned it, whether it's we have the Garner app or not, depending on the prior decision, they're going to find and get you on the phone if they can or get back to you right away. So like there is clear advocacy happening and I think that in our busy lives, what we hear from staff is that that's something that we can help through the clinic taking off the plate. And that didn't come through as strong with, with the other group.
I just want to clarify that this will all going to be happening in parallel with people's own, they're going to keep their own primary care provider. This is sort of a parallel system, right? We're not forcing people to use our clinic instead of their primary if they prefer to.
Yeah, that, it's a very good question. So I, again, this would be the third clinic that I would be involved in. I will tell you the first two, we pitched as more acute care, but can be your primary care. I think in following up with proactive and talking with Laura and Brown and Brown, I think the idea is to pitch us as the primary care clinic that can also do acute. But to your point, yes, you do not have to go to the clinic, you can certainly keep your own primary care physician and use it as acute. But our goal is really to have this individual become primary care for a good portion of our population. It, it, it's certainly not going to be for everybody. People have wonderful relationships and things like that, but it, it can be that primary care model as well.
Does that end, this person's personality is going to be very important and how much input do we have in the hiring of this person?
Yep, so we, yeah, so we will do proactive MD or Quad Med will, they're going to vet the medical component of it. Like I, I'm not going to sit here and say I can vet any of that. We will have a chance, they'll bring those clinicians that pass whatever X, Y, and Z interviews they have, they're going to bring them to us. And we're going to have the ability to interview them and then say, yes, we think that's a good fit, no, we don't think that's a good fit. And then we go from there. So having been a part of those before, I've been through in West Dallas, we interviewed four people and I did not like any of them. Our, our interview team was like, none of those clinicians are going to work and come to the board with some new ones. And then went through a whole nother panel and said, yep, we could work with three of these four. And then ended up settling on which we thought was the best, but we'll have that same kind of philosophy here of which employee or which, which of their clinicians, employees do we think is going to work best for us.
Just a question on, on the management fee of $251,000, how does that compare to other clinics that you, our consultants here have been involved with?
Yeah, so that dollar amount, there's several factors that go into it and the way that it's rolled up under each vendor has a bunch of different caveats and nuances. So you can see even when you look and compare it from like IT costs, how much they differentiate amongst the two vendors. So we can provide you with that specific breakout as far as what that management fee kind of all entails, but it, it does look different across the board, but that's not uncommon to see that dollar amount.
Yeah, I just see what's into, rolled into there.
Can I, as long as we're on this slide, can I jump in and ask related to the staffing level? I guess there's a couple of questions, but I, the salary, that's a salary for just those three people.
That staff is their salary and benefits for those three.
What time period?
For a year, for year one.
Wow, what hours?
That's, yeah, that was going to be.
So clinic will be open 40 hours a week. Yep.
It'll be 40 hours a week.
Hours are not totally decided, but we know there'll be morning and after, or evening hours.
And they're proactive employees, they're not Franklin Public Schools employees.
Correct, they're not ours.
Maybe, I, that just seems like a lot of money for those three people, knowing.
I wonder if that is specifically their malpractice insurance?
Yeah, that's, that's full comp, full benefits.
I guess that's, that would, if malpractice insurance is tied into their staff reimbursement rate, then I understand.
I mean, to some extent, yeah, but I mean, LPN yearly salary, I don't know.
Yeah, pretty generous.
That's, yeah.
Do you want to?
I mean, I'm an RN, so would you hire an RN? And obviously not me, but like, is it going to be an LPN or is it possible that could be more expensive because you would have an RN instead of an LPN? I just, just seems like a very high amount for those.
So their model is based on LPN.
With a patient advocate, so I don't know how much money they make in a year, but like just in terms of yearly salary, that's a lot of money. But they are going to be there 40 hours a week, so it's not like they're just like halftime or anything like that.
Yep.
Okay, I, I had a couple other questions, but go ahead, Mary. Go ahead. Well, I just kind of going, piggybacking onto Angie's question about having other, you know, you might still have your primary care physician or maybe you, you know, you're, I don't know, whatever specialist or something like that. Does proactive's medical record trend, like do they use Epic or something like that in my chart? Like if I see the clinic here, will my primary care doctor be able to access those records? Or is it like, we'll print them off, you can fax them to your doctor, you know, what's the?
Yeah, that's a really great question. So proactive MD utilizes Athena. So while not on Epic, it has the ability to communicate and connect with Epic without any problems. And even health system to health system, even if they're both on Epic, there's still issues across the board. So just being on Epic alone wouldn't eliminate, you know, issues altogether. But proactive MD is very comfortable with working with health systems and sending over records as needed.
Yeah, that's, I mean, obviously Epic can be different, but that aspect of like, will the systems interface at all with lab results? And you know, you know, if you do see your primary care and you need to let them know what your cholesterol was or whatever else that might be.
Do you have another question?
Maybe, go ahead, Mary.
So I don't see MD up there, but there will be an MD affiliated with the clinic?
No.
So every, every nurse practitioner, physician's assistant has to work under a doctor, so a licensed physician. So part of the management fee for both of these groups is oversight of a physician. So that nurse practitioner in this particular case for both Quad Med and proactive MD, if something is outside of their realm, they can call a doctor and have some oversight. The doctor will not be onsite, but it is part of their management fee.
But the person you're interviewing that you said.
Would be the, we'd be interviewing the nurse practitioner, not the doctor, not the oversight.
I was going to say, is the doctor going to be with Garner, but there is no doctor too.
The doctor is somebody that proactive and Quad Med has on staff. We, we won't interact with them, employees going there won't interact with them, they'll interact with the nurse practitioner. Nurse practitioner says this is maybe a little bit deeper than I think, I'm going to call the doctor to say, what are your thoughts? Here's what I'm seeing for X, Y, and Z, what are your thoughts?
What is the mental health aspect to any of this? And I apologize if I overlooked it.
So as currently provided, there isn't a mental health specialist with either of the staffing models. That would be something that if we wanted to, we'd bring it at a later date.
Cause I just envision that being kind of top of mind.
We do too.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's a great question. And the patient advocate is actually a bachelor, has a bachelor's in social work. So they have a very broad understanding and strong understanding of what mental health, you know, equates to the patient experience and journey. There is an opportunity to scale that up to a licensed clinic social worker, but obviously that comes at a price.
That's actually, thank you for saying that, that's part of my question is like, you know, patient advocate, what are their qualifications? So a patient advocate would have to have a social work degree to be in that role.
Correct.
That's pretty important.
Change careers.
I was just going to say, we're trying to change career, Mary.
Mary, your comment though about Garner is important. So if Garner remains as a benefit as it is today and the clinic gets implemented, that clinic will be available and at the top of the Garner app for the patients on the medical plan. So when they do search it, that will, so promoting awareness, driving utilization into the clinic, that will always be kind of a continuous reminder to patients, to the members.
What, no, they're going to be here 40 hours a week, which is a lot. If they're here until, you know, five o'clock on a Tuesday and my kids, my kids are older now, but somebody's young child gets an ear infection, you know, and like whatever after hours, is there any kind of like wraparound care to that? Or would that just be an urgent care visit at that point if you can't wait till the next day or?
I cannot, Megan, you know a little bit more about that one.
Yes, there, there is a wraparound with virtual care support. So after hours support, I don't have that off, I have the spreadsheet up here, but I'm just looking to see if I can pull it, that's what the additional fee would look like with that.
That's amazing, actually.
Yeah, well, I mean, 40 hours a week is amazing as it is. And talking about the dispensary, sorry, I'm going to jump over the place now. I'm kind of excited about this. The dispensary, those medications, if I need my thyroid medicine and I go to this, you know, I'm seeing here, that medication is free to me? So as.
Yep. So I think like an important distinction, if I, if a person comes in with high blood pressure and, and just wants to go to the clinic to get their high blood pressure medication, that nurse practitioner is going to want to meet with you, have a conversation before they are going to say, we're going to give you high blood pressure medication. It's possible that over the course of the next five renewals, they're just allowing you to do that or just come in and have your blood pressure read and then you get your medication and then like next year you're back meeting with them again. But like, following that, yes, every medication there is free. So child comes in with sore throat, gets a Moxosone and they're taking it in the car.
And they won't have every medication, but.
No, typically it's like the top 60 to 80 formularies that come out of ours and then what they're seeing from a regional basis will be dispensed there.
You read my mind, that was my question, is do they stock based on what they think we need or just based on? You read my mind. That was my question is, do they stock based on what they think we need or just based on?
It it's not willy nilly. It's taking a look at our health plan and what are we using a lot of? Or what are they seeing that's happening in the area? So they'll have that as well. That's part of cost though, right? That's a passer cost to us and I have been part of clinics where we stock something and all of them like, that medication expired because nobody came in to use it. And then the next month, it's like, oh, my gosh, we need like five more amoxicillants because strep throat's climbing through the area and everybody's getting it. So there plus of the minuses to it, but it is a very good benefit from being on site and being able to get my medication right there.
Vaccines are expensive. Are vaccinations provided at this clinic?
Yes.
They keep the vaccines. And then what's up with the office supplies difference cost between proactive MD and quad med?
So that's something that we have to talk about with them because like I, and I joked about it too. It's like with Katie, I'll buy the paper and the markers. And so I like, to me, that that we'll review the startup costs too. Like, we're going to want that list of all the things that we're going to need. From a clinic furniture standpoint, like, I'm certain we can go out and buy chairs and things like that. And I don't know about the medical table and things like that. They probably have a better vendor for that. But for chairs that are sitting kind of in the lobby area or for a computer desk chair for the MA, like, we can procure all that stuff. So like, I'm not locked into the medical cost. The biggest thing for us to review is staffing, management fee, IT, because all of those are coming up. That implementation cost is going to be a non-negotiable to start with. But those startup costs and those supply costs, like all that, like, we'll talk about them. And if we need to just drop off paper in the office, we'll just drop off paper in the office.
Our team is really good about the nice to haves and the need to haves. Because if you give them like check, they're going to make it really bougie. And it needs to be, it needs to be appealing to an audience, but it needs to be. Yeah, yes.
And going back to stepping, you said you would be part of the interview process, personality wise at least, not medical wise. For all three people or just for the main practitioner?
Typically for the main practitioner.
Then are they? Be on the patient advocate one, that person's for the make or break.
Well, and will that, my next, my kind of follow up question is, will the team have voice? And, you know, I mean, like, will the nurse practitioner get to choose who her LPN is?
Push that back to Megan, she'll know more about that.
How do they do that?
Yeah, so typically, you know, they would recruit for the NPPA and go hard after that. That's going to be the hardest position to recruit out of the gate. But certainly the Brown and Brown team is involved in all of the hiring and decision making as well. And we would certainly request that the district is part of all of those interviews if that's the direction that you guys want to go in. They wouldn't have any problem with that.
Yeah, I just, I just think the the, it's three people in an office, they have to work well together. So it can't just be three strangers who are like, here you go, like, I feel like there might need to be some.
And we've seen success with other clinics too that were opening up in which we find that NPPA and they have their MA that they want to bring along with. So we highly push and advocate for that as well.
It's exciting. I think it'll be a huge benefit.
When you ask about like with Laura, this will be something that she will talk about and hiring.
Well, because I think you had said it would be for anybody on the health plan, but also employees who work a certain number of hours or something that.
So, yeah, we haven't, don't have a specific name for it, but like an employee who has set hours that works with us on a regular basis. So I was thinking all our EAs, secretarial staff.
That's what I was thinking is our our EAs who might not have our health insurance, but they have a kid who's, you know, they have strep throat or something and they need their.
Or people that take cash and lube that have a health plan somewhere else. This would still be an option for them.
Does this, does adding a health clinic, could it help employees in terms of if we offer, if we go to a single plan, is this almost a second plan that is zero deductible?
It it's not a second plan, but it offers that zero deductible option, right? I can go see my primary care without any cost to me. So I don't care what your deductible is, keep it at the five thousand, ten thousand this today. Clinic costs me nothing, so I go there, I get my yearly appointment. Maybe they find something out. I can still follow that model all the way through at a zero cost to the employee. Now, if they outsource you to a specialist or whatever, have you now used fall under the health plan and things like that? But anything inside of the four walls of the clinic, like, that's all free. We are promoting it as all free and that's how we would like to keep it. And we would request that the board would keep it that way. Because truthfully, again, if we're going to drive users to high quality healthcare, that finding ways to advocate for the patient, which is anything that's free is helps advocate for that. That's how we would request the board also allow us to move forward with that.
Well, and I mean, I'll just say, as somebody who uses a similar clinic in a different district, the idea of it being free is why we go to clinics. It's a, it's a great benefit. And we don't have forty hours a week at my clinic, so it's really a huge benefit.
Does anybody have further questions?
I'll just leave me out though. Could we start smaller and add hours?
We can. I don't have the cost for that. We can.
It's harder to recruit.
For sure, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. You certainly can. The challenge is recruiting. When you look at NP that's coming over, they're going to want to be most likely benefit eligible. So you're looking at a point eight in order to hit that benefit eligibility mark. So it's really challenging to recruit for a point five in any position across healthcare in general, unless obviously they're splitting their time in multiple organizations or facilities.
Anybody else?
No, I was just going to say, thanks for putting all the work into finding this and creating this whole plan. I know it took a lot.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, we're on the homework stretch. Do we want to stop for a few minutes?
So I didn't get a vote, but I accidentally said no.
All right, let's move on to Board of Education meeting dates.
Oh, hold, we have one more item here. Recreation Department tax levy, we have a few items. Oh, sorry, yes. I was already jumping ahead, thinking I was going three in a row. My bad.
You got a break, can you bathroom?
I do not.
All right, Board of Education meeting dates.
So one question came through on these parts, the date that we relaxed with the senior night in May at the second meeting. So I said, like, it's a discussion. Now the screen decides to start. We just changed it, it's so hard to. Yeah, we could take it on, I would say the biggest thing is the bigger bit out of league, which makes it June nerd, which is the people for school.
Was there a dump truck that like banged at stars when you were speaking earlier today?
Yeah, I think that's a sign. Even though I asked them like fifteen minutes, we had that dump on either.
Right.
And it was like, well, that's like, that was.
You said third, that was.
Can we, my question with this is, could we just move senior night to Tuesday or Thursday that week instead of having to move?
I mean, they set those dates early and everything.
I can ask, absolutely. This conflict came up, I think, two or three years ago and both things were on the same night and they moved to senior night. So it seems like with a year of advance notice, the Saber Center probably isn't booked. So is there reason senior night has to be on Wednesday? We can move it to, I don't care, why don't we move our board meeting? I don't have plans.
Is there, is there any issue with, sorry, is there any issue with, does the board meeting have to be on a Wednesday? Is what I'm asking, can it be, if we either change the senior night or we change the board meeting?
If we're going to change the board meeting, I'd rather move it a week out and keep it on Wednesday.
I think the board meeting should stay on a Wednesday.
I'm fine with that.
That's, that's what.
Change senior, what we've had. So how about option one is if senior night can move, let's do that. And if that doesn't work, can we move the board meeting to the following Wednesday?
Well, or would we move it to a previous Wednesday to keep it, to keep it in, to in May?
Well, I'm wondering, is this just a one year issue or is this?
No, senior night is always the last week of May or generally the last week or two of May.
But does the board have to be there?
The board is often there, their board.
It would be nice if there was.
I don't think I've ever been there before. Honestly, I've never been to a senior night. However, even when you guys were talking about it today, it's like, I've never been. As a board member.
Strong connection to the board and.
Oh, see, and I just, I guess my point with this is even, this is very loud all of a sudden, did that all start working now? We're not touching.
We don't know.
Um, I just think in general, there shouldn't be, if they can be avoided, there shouldn't be other major district events like this on a night when there's a school board meeting. Because for, you know, it might be senior night for, you know, maybe I want to go to that as a board meeting, but may, as a board member, maybe it's a concert that Linda really wants to go to as a board member. Maybe it's a Saber Center community event that we all should go to and support. You know what I mean? Like, I just don't think as a general rule, we should be scheduling things. You know, maybe it's an open house at your elementary school, but you can't go because you have a board meeting, you know? I think in general, and that's a bit, maybe a bigger conversation, but if it can be avoided, I think that there shouldn't necessarily be district events on school board meeting nights.
So then what do you think we should move, the school event or the?
Board meetings are pretty consistently on Wednesdays.
This is a larger conversation, but for next year's schedule, the one thing we're talking about is senior night. So let's see if senior night can be moved to a different day in the week. And if not that, shift the board meeting. I'm seeing a lot of nodding. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, that's how.
Or just do it the following week, like leave the board meeting on the twenty seventh and do senior night the following week.
Yeah, any one of those, yeah.
And that's a little harder because, you know, the end of senior year and that kind of.
Even in the districts, it's almost always that last week of May everywhere.
Yeah, and then we prior is usually national honors induction, like on that Wednesday from the district. Which is, which is like cadence is off next year because of where spring break falls. I was just looking back at the calendar because I remember grappling with these dates with Darlene. And it's the eighth, if the eighth was our April date, it would be eight fifteen instead of, right now it's fifteen twenty nine. The difficulty with that is that packets are going out on the Friday of spring break week, right? So that shifted it to be back like a week back in office. We get a half before you're back at the board table. So that's where the cadence gets off next year. Doesn't change the discussion right now, but it probably falls on the, why does it not fall on the same night every year? Like, really, this falls for spring, depends on where spring break is.
Let's see if Mr. Volvo and Mr. Stewart are okay with. Okay, I have another question. Why, why are we putting key communicators on here?
We just added them on so the board had an idea. It's a board run group, board and district. So we put it on here just to show where they fall in comparison to board meetings.
But it's not, I mean, don't we have some legal requirement to set board dates, not key communicator dates?
We can take it off if it's a problem. We're just trying to make it for, we need to look at where they are, if you want them the same week or opposite weeks, because we're trying to land on the opposite weeks.
I kind of personally, I kind of liked having that to see how they fall. And because, I mean, key communicators exist because the board asks for it to.
It could go away also.
The what?
It could go away also. It's not.
Well, if it did, we would take it off the calendar.
Well, are you saying it is a legal problem or or you think?
You approve board meetings annually, so you're just saying, don't put it on there.
Right.
I think it's perspective, if I look at it, right, the whole board's at them because we run it together, but it doesn't.
We would have to, yeah, to be on there.
All right, so what do we approve? We're going to be approving the meeting dates. We're be, going to be approving the board meeting dates. But the key communicators could stay on this worksheet so that we know when they're going to be.
Well, that would suggest that we're approving them.
Don't hurt.
Okay.
Let's just take them off.
Well, okay.
You can take them off.
Is there consensus to take them off?
Yes. I already have them on my calendar.
I was going to say, quick take, screenshot.
Darlene will, in her wonderful way, send out meeting invites, so we will get them. Is there a motion?
It's next week.
It's next week.
All right, up for, ready for? Okay, all right, this is just for information only. And this is coming based off of the conversation with Matt Gomez and the Recreation Department from a couple of board meetings ago, and just trying to give you a visual to explain the levy process that I discussed. So again, prior to putting this together, we had a dollar amount, not necessarily any rhyme or reason behind it. It's been in place for a significant amount of time. Was raised in a, following a conversation with Mr. Millsor when I first got here to the six hundred eighty-four thousand you saw. But again, not necessarily a rhyme or reason or exactly what it's tied to. So and working with Brad, because this really stemmed from conversations with Brad over the last year and then Matt taking it over in November. So really, there's a few steps, so I'm just going to walk through them. Step one is to calculate the anticipated salaries and benefits. Now, when we actually do the levy, we'll know what the salaries and benefits will be. But for the purposes of today, we're calculating the salaries and benefits and those are straight from this list of individuals who are right here.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Is that one of our existing district nurses? Are you hiring a new nurse?
That's an existing person who's already being paid for out of recreation. The only new addition to this is the circ manager and a point five FTE on the custodian level.
I'm sorry, just to clarify again with this nurse, we have two district nurses and one of them is paid out of.
One is considered a community nurse versus.
Thank you.
And they always have been, we just remember.
Correct.
Yeah, how did I not know that?
It wasn't broken down like this.
So again, step one, calculate salaries and benefits for those individuals. Step two is to calculate estimated utility costs. So we're working with data wrangler, Andy Daniels, really is spearheading this. So we're getting a utility cost for both food service and for all the things associated with recreation. So whether those are events where a person is paying to rent our facilities or there are feeder groups being used, but outside of school hours and not district using them. So when we host the fall play in the Saber Center, that's a district run event. District is operating the Saber Center. When Forte comes in and rents the Saber Center, that's not a district thing. There's a fee associated with that, but we're running utilities to keep it at a certain blah, blah, blah. So in any case, we have some software. So what this represents is about the first five months, estimated cost of utilities. At some point, that will transition to all twelve months when we have all twelve months of data. You can see that that is twenty-two thousand five hundred. Again, those are tied directly to recreation events. A plus or minus, so taking our prior year net operating actuals. So if we were ahead last year, revenues outpaced expenses, you'll see a reduction. If expenses outpaced revenues, we would add. So we have salaries, utilities. We had a net positive last year. So we're reducing that and saying our fixed costs are this one point one seven two million dollars. Then we're going to do a fund balance adjustment and we're going to try to maintain fifty percent of our expenses. So right now, in looking at Matt's budget, he's estimating one point nine six nine million. So we would need nine hundred eighty-four thousand dollars to meet that fifty percent threshold. Our current fund balances of the end of the year was, or anticipated this year's to be one point eight nine six million. We're going to use or estimate it to use a million dollars to finish the circ. That was part of the overall circ costing. So that would tell us that we would end the year at eight million nine hundred sixty-eight thousand. We're eighty-eight thousand less than what we would anticipate or what we would like to hold. So we would have to add that eighty-eight thousand back in. Now, if we anticipate being higher than fifty percent at year end, we would subtract because we wouldn't need to hold that. So that's where the then total, one point one seven plus the eighty-eight thousand, gets us to an estimated tax levy next year of one point two six million for recreation. So we'll calculate this all in July after we know where salaries and benefits are. We know where the year end is going to sit and we'll come back with a new number. One of the questions is, that's quite a bit higher than last year. It is. Last year was six hundred eighty-four thousand simply for running this. It's going to take us about a year or two to right size till we get to whatever that correct number is. My estimation is probably truthfully somewhere around eight hundred fifty to nine hundred thousand is probably where we would be right sized. I just don't have the exact data to show that. But presumably over the long run, like we would be taking off, instead of adding eighty-eight, probably taking off three hundred thousand dollars because our fund balance will have exceeded that fifty percent threshold. So we'll reduce that. So there's a, a couple of years of a like smoothing out period until we probably come to a pretty consistent amount every year.
So basically, we're resetting the base. And I guess we have to also think about program revenues. So we're increasing our cost, doubling them now, six hundred eighty-four million two. And what about the increased program fees that we're, that's what we're building is to offer more programs.
Correct. So those are all built into Matt's estimated budget. So you're not seeing the full estimated budget over here because we only need the estimated expenses for this, to run this particular model.
So would that reduce the levy then?
Not for next year, but presumably for twenty-six, twenty-seven, yeah. Then that's where, that's why we would see that smoothing period. Because we'd be comparing actuals of twenty-five, twenty-six for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year.
So you're anticipating that step three will be more favorable for us going forward?
Correct.
Because how does that work though? Because we're running more programs.
Because we're resetting the baseline. So this is the reset year. And now we're providing a strategy behind it. Like, this is a why. If you ask me where we come up with the six hundred eighty-four thousand and what it makes up, I'd tell you. And now we're providing a strategy behind it. Like this is a why. If you ask me where we come up with the six hundred eighty-four thousand and what it makes up, I'd tell you I have no idea. It was a number that added forty thousand to what it was previously. I don't know how it was. So.
Idea is that the. You're covering the cost of the staff with program revenues, like the nurse.
We're not covering the cost of the staff with program revenues.
Why aren't we? I mean, certain staff are base staff. I get that, but other staff are connected to program.
The nurse is connected to nothing. There's no program for the nurse.
Then why do we have the nurse?
You tell me. You've been here way longer than I have. I don't know.
That's your answer?
The answer is I don't know. Why, why was that position hired?
Then maybe we don't need it.
I, I, you, you, you tell me why I was hired. I don't know why I was hired. I can tell you, we have a two nurses for the. One for the community aspects of working with the city, working especially during COVID that time. Working with the city and then both of them work directly with students and plans with schools to help make sure that our students are safe. Why we hired two initially? I don't know what the need was at that particular time. I can only tell you what the need is now.
Maybe the question is why is one of them paid for out of the this? Recreation?
My guess is at that time it was a cost savings measure to hire two because we couldn't afford for it out of fund town. Once it's in community service, we just have to make sure that they're doing community service work that meets the threshold of fund eighty recreation, which we are. But at that time, it's probably a cost savings measure to the general operating budget in order to get a second nurse.
Can you just put cost over there? We seriously are saying that's what they did?
Nope. The, the, the question was, why do you think? I'm providing a why do you think? I'm not saying that's a for sure. There rules around recreation used to be very loose. They have tightened up from DPI over the last eight years or so. So you have to provide a much. Better definition or job description of what that person's actually doing to meet that threshold. But prior to that, it was.
Having the nurse in the recreation department currently meet those rules.
Yes, every, every position you see up there does.
Required by our needs.
Every position you see up there meets the threshold of. Qualifications to fund under recreation.
But none of these things are like she is the nurse for the basketball program.
No, there's no program tied to the nurse.
She doesn't work with the before and after school?
She does, but not directly for them. She works with our school district as well. She works with the community as well. She's not hired because we have a before and after school program.
If we were to follow them around all day, they're.
Very little time is spent at the before and after school. Probably what's happening is in the fall, we have a student with needs. She's meeting with the program that's running the before and after care to explain what does this child need to make sure they work and then. Not working with them again till another child meets that threshold.
If we move the nurse to the general fund, we would save tax on the year.
And we would add X, Y, and Z to the general operating deficit.
While there be other state revenues.
There would be no other state revenues for that.
It would be part of the overall cost of the general fund.
So increasing the general fund deficit.
Then anyone takes some money from teacher salaries.
It would come from somewhere.
It would be an honest use of the.
This is honest.
It still is an honest use of the funds.
I'm not sure we need the nurse.
Oh. That's not a conversation for tonight.
It sounds like it's here because of funding, which is not a reason.
Again, all of the people, the job descriptions for them meet the threshold of why we would have them in community service. I can't explain why they were hired initially. I, I was asked for interpretation, so I provided a potential interpretation, but. Right now they meet the thresholds of why they're in recreation.
Can I see this?
I'm sure you can, yes.
And why do we need a circ manager?
Because that building is going to have a significant amount of people coming in every day. Those people that are currently working, so. Matt, our directors and our coordinators already have other jobs that take up their time full time.
But who sets up this room?
A custodian.
Well.
A custodian is not managing the circ. They're not directing people where to go. They're not helping to coordinate events that are happening inside of there. Think Tracy at the Saber Center. Like we wouldn't just have a community, a custodian manage the Tracy.
Community come on in and do what you want with this building. Well, there's good, there, I mean. All of the coordinators are going to be in that building, right?
Already doing their full-time jobs.
Well, who manages the front desk now at the rec department?
They step out and do it, but they don't have community events happening in there. There's nothing to help clean up. There's nothing to help set up. It's an office.
But why can't the person sitting this up set up that?
Because they have a full-time job at the middle school. That custodian that works at the middle school steps out of their job over there to come over here and set this up. This is setting up some tables and chairs is different than operating a facility that has. Multiple studios, a community room and a pickball.
Excuse me, sorry. Why are we talking about this at the board table? This specifically, the management of.
But I was just. Because it's just the budget for the circ building. Where it's establishing tax levy for the recreation department. Why would we not be talking about it? He's got a list up there that shows me a circ manager. Why wouldn't I talk about that?
You asked the question and it was answered, so I, I suggest we move on. That's what I'm saying.
I.
You don't agree with the answer, but it was answered.
We need the circ manager to manage it though.
Does anybody else have further questions about the rec department faculty?
So I want to be understand though that this is the back step. It will be going down from there because you're saying.
I know. What I'm saying is we're setting the baseline. Is it possible it goes up? It's possible. Presumably it's going down, probably by a pretty good amount. But I'm not going to say for certain it's going to go down, but. If I was a betting person, I'd push my chips till it's going to go down side of the.
I guess I'd like to see what you're proposing for the twenty-five, twenty-six complete budget before I.
Well, I'm not asking for approval on this. This is just for information at this particular point.
What do we think we might need a policy to, um. Grab around this now that we're starting with a new base and to your point.
A po.
You didn't do the job and didn't know why.
It's really just a procedure. I don't know if we need a policy. This is just a procedure. Any, anybody should be able to take this over and plug and play. And now come up with what step five is.
I think this is helpful, this.
Yeah. This is an explanation of how he arrived at his budget request for this department. I don't think it's a policy. It's how he's doing his job.
Well, we can. Kind of, again, this is a base about that. You're saying that these staff are appropriate and these are going to be, and you're not taking into account revenue. That's my question. Where are we?
Step three is resume, revenue. That is going to fluctuate depending on how the programs performed previous year. Net operating actuals. So feeding into that will be revenue minus expenses.
The only thing expenses are used for, the twenty-five, twenty-six expenses are used for is for that estimated fund balance hold of fifty percent. It's helping set that.
Well, let me ask you, again, I want to see what the operating actuals are going to be. Their actuals.
You'll see that all with the budget. When that comes.
Well, they're estimates.
Yeah, when that comes in May, you'll see that all.
I think we also need to look at, um. The fee side of things. Because you, in the email, you mentioned about the, um. Because we do, this building is funded. Not in the city tax role, but just the school.
Correct.
So that means that twenty-five percent of the tax rule is not funding this program, even though they have access to the building. They're not paying for it because they live in other districts. How do we come for that as a fairness between taxpayers?
As was sent back in the email, they pay a thirty-dollar fee upfront.
I think that needs to be looked at. I don't think it's enough. If you do some basic math of twenty-five percent of that million two. Doesn't come close to a, a thirty-dollar fee.
But you wouldn't expect to make that up in year one either.
Well.
Because that building should presumably stand for a significant period of time, right? So. No business is making up construction costs in year one.
A million two is how many every year?
From the tax levy standpoint.
Correct. So three hundred percent of that cost. Is should be, should be coming from districts that. Presidents that are not in our district. And that's not thirty dollars.
I disagree with your philosophy that the recreation department should be completely self-funded through fees paid by people participating in the programs. I think philosophically we have a difference in that. Recreation and community program is meant to be a service to our community. That's a benefit of living in this community and not a fee for service experience.
That's what I'm talking about.
I fundamentally disagree with.
That's what I'm talking about.
Kind of.
Business. Notice now it's a taxpayer business issue. Ten.
A couple of things. One. We may, there, there may be a time to address the fees, but I don't think that's today. But certainly could be with the budget. But secondly, I would wonder, I would wonder what that question is. Do, do the people that, um, Oak Creek has a recreation department. And. I don't know if those, I don't know if those people that live in Franklin, but go to the Oak Creek Rec Department.
They charge a not, there's a non-resident fee. So you pay a fee and a non-resident fee.
So.
For every program, it's not like a thirty-dollar catch-all and then you pay the fee or whatever. It's resident, non-resident.
So there may be a time to talk about fees, but I don't think that's today.
I would agree.
That would be interesting before we open the doors there.
That would be an interesting comparison is how other districts handle out of resident participation fees.
They just have a two-tiered structure, don't they?
Yeah, most of the time I think they do. If you're in district, you pay this for a program. So it's, it's not hitting everyone. It's hitting the people who choose to do a lot of programs.
Does anybody else have questions? About this? All right, SNC Electric Company donation. Mr. Cromer, please.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, it's not my word.
I keep going because like there's a strange smell coming. Look at me like what I'm looking like. Sorry.
I do smell it.
Thank you. I was trying to.
It smells like electrical burning.
Yes, yes, it does. Thank you. So I'm monitoring it.
Yeah, we'll just unplug it. Um, SNC Electric Company has donated twenty-five hundred dollars towards our CTE program per board policy. The donation over a thousand dollars comes to the board for. Um, approval. Um, the intention of these funds is to use for scholarships or stipends for internships, job shadow programs, things like that. But again, all related to our CTE programming.
With thanks to SNC Electric, I move to formally accept their donation of twenty-five hundred dollars. Second.
All right, motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Larson. All in favor?
Hi.
O's motion carries. Thank you. Uh. All right, WASB Board of Directors, Region eleven seat vacancy. Everybody should have received this in the mail. Um, there is a. Uh, we are in Region eleven of the WASB of fifteen regions. Mr. Hyde from. Mosquito has been that representative, that. That person for the last, I don't know, nine or twelve years. He is retired from the board. There will be a. There will be a vacancy and somebody will be appointed until, uh. November. October, I guess, when they, when that. When that new person is voted on. I would like to, I would like to be that person. And I, I don't think we need. Or approval. I just wanted to, I just wanted to mention it to everybody.
Good for you.
I don't know if I can at all switch you to be a nominee.
Good for you, best of luck.
Or has said anything?
You'd be, you'd do a great job.
Um, so I, I don't know if anybody wants to comment.
Thank you for volunteering.
Yep. Well, he has to be voted in.
Volunteering to run.
There'll be, there'll be.
He's putting himself out there to run for the.
There's, yes, there's no vote. There's no vote. Now it'd be interim position. That will be the WS, ASB will. Will put somebody in place. And there will be a vote in October. All right, um, we can move on. Policies, uh, five, zero, one, one, nondiscrimination of students on the basis of disability. Fifty-four, twenty, appropriate use of seclusion and restraint, sixty-four, thirty-five, delegation of local. Education agency representative duties for special education. Dr. Mole?
Yeah, it's me. I'm doing all three of them. There's no changes to any of them. If you remember, the seclusion and restraint law changed, I believe it was in twenty twenty. So Mr. Ekman and myself did do some reordering of the administrative roles, but largely there is zero. Changes in each of the three policies. One doesn't even have minor edits, but there's edits to do.
And this is the first read though, right?
It is the first read. So I'm happy to take questions. They're, we're not really making changes, I guess, to put it plainly.
All right, does anybody have questions, comment? Thank you very much. The treasurer's report is available in Board Doc's library.
I want to say something about that.
Please.
Well, there's no link here in the agenda to get there. I never think that that would be. If the public is looking at this, that they would have options to.
Is that easy to add, Darlene?
It typically was in the past. And also I, I would like to ask a question on it, although given the time. Tonight, I'm not going to spend any more time, but. I know that when I looked was at the convention or the conference. And there is a, WASB does have a program on best practices as far as the financial. I believe, like you mentioned, you took that.
Mm-hmm.
And one of the, um. Criteria, one of the requirements is that the board looks at the treasury report once a month. And I think we, we can do better with that. So I will be asking questions.
Elaine will be helpful in reading that.
And I would expect to ask a few questions in future meetings.
Thank you. Uh, all right, um, orderly is on reports.
I went to math night. And I played some of the games. And I, and I enjoyed myself and I think so did all the kids who were there.
It was really fun. There were volunteers who seemed most likely sophomores at, at the school and they were so engaging and then. There were a lot of families. So it was fun.
I think we had about fifteen high school students and volunteers. What was it?
Uh, the S one USA meeting was this week. They largely recapped, um, and praised participation in. People speaking at the joint finance committee, um. Overall felt that unanimity of message was much stronger this year than it has been in the past. And they are holding up very little hope for a timely budget.
All right, anybody else or school and community engagement reports?
I don't know if it counts. I was, I did the music selection night. I was there kind of representing umps and talking about, talking about music. So that was fun because again, lots of families, you know, I mean. Both parents and siblings and everything. So it's really one of my favorite little things to volunteer at.
Here also was a volunteer usher at our Forte.
Seasoned officer last week.
And I was a poll worker last week.
Yeah, I was both.
Yeah.
As Dr. Brennan said earlier, um. She and Mr. Cromer and I were at the Joint Finance Committee, um, and provided testimony. Largely went over the, largely spoken the letter that we, um, sent.
Was it allowed? Test one?
Oh, my gosh. There was tons of people.
So let's see if that.
They were.
Did they have food there?
They did not. They told us the first. One they had on that Tuesday ended at four fifteen and they were like the legislatures were out, legislators were out the door. And when they started calling people like twenty at a time, they were going like by four-minute increments. If you checked in at seven thirty, these names are coming up. If you checked in at seven thirty-four, it's like, oh, my gosh, we're going to be next. Nope, nope, nope.
Well, thank you for doing that.
I had a conversation with Senator Wongard. There he was, he was, um. Joint Finance. Applied legislators, um. Representative Rodriguez came and spoke with. Came and spoke with us, um, on the floor, um, Senator Bradley. I didn't see Representative Wiki there, but I don't know if he was there that day or not. He is not on joint finance. Anyway, um, we were there. So, anybody else?
We could have a groundbreaking thing, which is kind of fun to see the community.
Of course, it's the groundbreaking today. Sorry.
It seems so long ago.
I was gonna say, it was like twelve hours ago, but, um. Well, and also another pause for our first round because they did a really nice job serving refreshments afterwards and that's true. They were very proud of that.
Great lemonade.
It is good lemonade.
Yeah.
That's one of the new things. It is very good.
Yeah, there's two flavors. I think we're getting a little punchy from that electronics brain.
That was like smoking hard.
If you're ready. Well, you gotta.
All right, future agenda, President Prime Fund recognition. Uh, Countrydale School presentation, Saber Center update. Twenty-five, twenty-six Board of Education meeting dates, technology report, health insurance and health clinic will be voted on. Uh, Neola Board Policy Administrative Rules Adoption. Potential land development curriculum.